Good evening and welcome to the Hanson Select Board meeting. Tonight is August 9th and we are being recorded by Whitman Hanson. Whitman Hanson, excuse me. Cable and if you don't mind, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, we have a jam-packed agenda and Mr. Weeks may impose upon you to read our public announcements.
Absolutely. Announcements, we are looking for citizens at large to become members of the newly revitalized Bylaw Review Committee, Recreation Commission, Economic Development Committee, and Highway Study Committee. Volunteer applications may be found on the town website at www.hanson-ma.gov or by calling the Selectmen's Office at 781-293-2131. And we have two upcoming meetings, Select Board meeting on August 23rd, 2022, and another Select Board meeting August 30th, 2022.
All right, thank you very much. So we have a hearing this evening for the Old Hitching Post located at 48 Spring Street. It's an application to the transfer of the On Permisses Restaurant and Alcohol Beverages License. And I will entertain a motion to open the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
I will take a roll call vote.
Aye.
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 Okay, great. So with that, I think, Andrew, did you want to get up and just talk about timing and, you know, that type of stuff?
We're working out of this set short on timing, maybe a few days.
Okay.
Like 10 days, something like that.
All right, but you've sold the restaurant to the cooks, right?
Yes.
Okay, if you guys just.
We're in the process of doing that.
All right, if you just want to lay that up for us.
We can tell you that.
Okay, great.
Financing spend improved, we've gone through the.
Sorry, I know who you are.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry, I'm Lori Cook.
Yep.
I'm Jason Cook, Nice to meet you, board. Nice to meet you.
Jason, anyway, just technical, there's a few more pieces just to select the date to close the call.
Okay.
We are happy to go back to the Hitching Post. I worked there many years ago, I saw catering after when I got home the business, so we have a new developer for Jason. But we're Hanson residents, we're excited about this new branch in our three.
And what, just in the way of background, for those who may not know you, just if you can mention other businesses that you own and how long you've been in the business.
I own a fork in the road, I've been there since 2005. Survived through the rocky 2008 period, that was interesting, but we made lots of friends in the community that way. We all helped each other as part of the business structure in our company and I also own Tomaros Tavern on the 27th Avenue.
I own AB Tent Rental, 35 years of business. My mom's lived in town for over 40 years. As Lori says, we live up on High Street, Hanson. We're always happy to be involved in anything that's going on in the town with the municipalities and whatnot, but a fire department, police department, I always love coming to Lori's place, our place, for lunch. And I've supported the DARE program with free tents for the last few years, I don't know what we'll do this year because of COVID, it's a little different, but we're always up, we always like to help and be part of. So this new venture for us is a little different. I'm going to be a manager-type person up there. And Andrea is excited to hand over the reins to us because she thinks we're a really good fit for it and we feel the same way and we're really excited to take over and be more of a part of Hanson.
Yeah, you guys have been great community partners in Pembroke and in Hanson, as has Andrea. She's been amazing to a number of different organizations. So I'm glad to know that, you know, that that's happening. Was there anything else that you wanted to let us know? I know you don't have the timing down. And, excuse me for a minute, did we have a packet for Ian?
Is that, is that her packet right there?
Yeah, it's in her drawer.
Sorry about this, I was tending my mom.
Yeah, her packet should be there.
It's in my drawer, okay, cool, thank you.
All right. We will get our act together at some point.
Sorry.
I just feel like the fates are conspiring this evening to throw us off track. Okay, I did have a little email and I'm glad you're here, Andrea, from our conservation agent who wanted to make sure that, he wants to make sure that the BOS let the new owners know that they have to maintain an occupied residential apartment on the site in accordance with the original ZBA approval of the restaurant. Also, the Conservation Commission imposed a perpetual condition that the catch basin at the end of the parking area has to be cleaned once per year and the completion of that needs to be reported to CONCOM. In addition, they have no recording of the certificate of compliance for the septic repair and it would behoove the owners to record it. So I'm just passing that on, if you guys have got any questions.
We already recorded that, the certificate of compliance.
So maybe it's, he's saying he has, they have no record? So maybe just loop back in with the Board of Health and Conservation and just make sure you're ticking and tying those things? Okay. Okay, and did anybody have any questions or concerns regarding the liquor license transfer?
I don't know.
No, okay. I'm just thrilled that the business is going to continue, that we've got owners who are responsible and have had a long record in other communities and within our own community of doing business. And so we welcome you as business owners to Hanson and we're thrilled about it. With that, I will entertain a motion to approve the liquor license transfer for the Old Hitching Post.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
And roll call vote, did anybody have any comments? Any concerns? Okay, great. That's great. With that, I will entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Great. All right. Thank you so much guys.
I didn't know, I want to say about Andrea that what she has set up for us in this community is.
Amazing.
Just a fluid transition because she's already done the homework and we're grateful because I probably wouldn't have known, we wouldn't have entertained it, it wasn't something like.
She's done an amazing job with that restaurant.
I'm so happy, I'm still happy. We're all happy saying, but we're all so happy.
Let's go have a drink.
Yeah.
It's bittersweet, you're amazing family, amazing family legacy, you've been amazing, so it's really sad to see you go, but I'm really enthusiastic about a good transfer.
It's been a really good 17 strong years and then 2014, Sparrow and I bought officially. So it's been home for us, we've made so many friends. I think the community, Hanson, all the surrounding towns, we've had a really good run and these two are going to have a great run.
You've gotten back what you put out there and these guys have too. And so it's a love fest with you guys and it's great to see.
Well, we might have never done it except for the situation that we're coming into, if I could add that with Andrea. Making all the help is going to stay with us. They're comfortable with us because of she and Sparrow.
And what they know was on for.
That's true.
That's amazing. All right, thanks guys, keep us in the loop. All right, take care.
Bye, everyone, take care.
All right. And then, what time have we got here? Well, we're precariously close to when we're about to talk to our finalists for Executive Assistant, but I think we can, we also have to approve a common victuals license application for Two Gals Grill at 1280 Main Street, Hanson, formerly Cafe Deli. So for those out there speculating, was anything going to go into Cafe Deli? Now you have your answer. So I will entertain a motion for that?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, fantastic and welcome to town, we hope to meet everybody. And we also have appointments. Roger Means as Safe Facilities Manager, Camp Kowani, pending Recreation Commission appointment on August 15th. Ms. Green, I'm assuming Mr. Malisi sent this to us feeling fairly confident that that would happen at the August 15th meeting?
Yes, yes, actually, Mr. Means was the number one candidate and Yolton candidate for the position.
Okay.
He has been a caretaker up the Camp Kowani for a number of years now, a little over a year.
Yep.
He's highly respected, does an awful lot of work up there, does great work and he's very deserving of his position.
Okay, Mr. Means, did you want to say anything, Laura?
I would have been here on time, but part of electricity is out up there right now.
Oh, you're kidding.
But I look forward to working with all of you and continue what I've been doing up there.
All right, great, thank you. I will entertain a motion to appoint Roger Means as the Facilities Manager at Camp Kowani, pending Recreation Commission appointment on August 15th.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? All right. Congratulations and keep up the good work. Thanks. And then we have Patricia Norton, Community Preservation Committee, term of 2022 to 2025. That was just a little disconnect with our very lengthy list of appointments that we did at a prior meeting. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Seconded it.
Okay, all in favor? All right, fantastic.
And you're doing a great job down there.
I was waiting on you.
They've got a thing going down here. And do we have time, do we have anybody in the hallway yet? I don't want to make you get up.
There was a young lady in the hallway, yes.
I already did that.
I thought it was last time.
Yes, I did, yes. Mr. Weeks had pointed out that on our agenda we had to recognize the passing of Bill Straight, but, and Bill was a wonderful civil servant, but I did recognize his passing several meetings ago. So I just didn't want people to think I was ignoring it or that we didn't think that he was important enough to recognize. We actually did do that a couple of meetings ago. He will be missed. He's one of the, one of a rare breed. Okay, and then with that, oh, feel free to come in and sit down and we'll be right with you. And with that, Ms. Fedoroff, I'm wondering whether we might just get, we'll take this a bit out of order, confirmatory order of taking sleeper property, if you could give us an update on that?
Yes, so tonight, the board should listen to the board for tonight, when you issued the order of taking initially, I want to say at the end or the beginning of June this year, you indicated that the purchase price for the, the. Sorry, I'm struggling for a word here. But the amount of damages for the taking was $203,000, which near the grant award that had been given by the state. So if you recall, this property was being purchased in land grant funds and the community preservation act funds that the CPC offered. The CPC offered $98,000, but then the town made up the difference, $203,000, which then gets returned to the town through this land grant.
Right.
And by clerical error in proof of the taking in the beginning of June, we noted the damages to be due at $203,000 rather than $300,000, which was the purchase price.
Is it, is it a pure $300,000 or 300 something?
I'm so sorry, Laura, I'm quick here.
Is it exactly 300,000 or, I thought it was like, it is exactly 300,000?
It's 300,000 in the balance, which is a couple thousand dollars or $1,500 is used for the other costs associated with purchasing the property. So the recording fees, title search issues and all and the like. So the total amount of the appropriation is 300 plus thousand dollars, but the damage award is 300,000 dollars.
Okay, so.
Based on an agreement with the parties who were selling the property originally, which we subsequently have to take because of the title issues.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. And this is the gift that keeps on giving. We keep having to discuss, we've had just all kinds of title issues and et cetera, et cetera, but we want that piece of property, it's a key. What does this motion need to look like tonight?
So the motion, and Lisa, do you have the last motion for the order of taking?
Oh.
No, I can look it up.
Okay.
I don't believe I do, Kate. No, I do not.
And someone's going to listen very carefully and then to what I say and say so.
Okay, let me just see, let me just see, who's going to take this one? Mr. Weeks is signaling.
We'll find out.
Okay, yeah.
All right, so here we go. The Board of Selectmen hereby issues the following order of taking to correct that issue in June 2022. This order of taking through Zero Quan Street, Hanson, Mass.
We need to go a little slower. We need to go way slower, way slower, a little slower.
She can't hear you.
No, he said, excuse me, Kate, you're just saying that we need to follow along and say so moved after you say this, right?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought.
They're sitting here trying to do shorthand.
I can use that, so moved.
Yeah. And talk as fast as you want, we'll say go move.
Next.
Okay.
... by Massachusetts General Act, Chapter 79, and Article 4, Special Tommie, A2, 2022. A certified copy is, of which is reported hereby, and of any and every other power and authority which is hereon to, in any way enabling, the Select Board of the Town of Hanson hereby take, on behalf of the Town of Hanson and under the care, custody, and control of the Conservation Commission, were designated to be used for recreational open space use as deemed necessary for the health and welfare of inhabitants of Hanson, as described in said Article 4. The fee ownership in that certain parcel of land with buildings thereon, if any, totaling approximately 13.1 acres, having a street address of Zero Quan Street, Hanson, Massachusetts, and Lot 2, on Town of Hanson Assessor's Mount 60, commonly known as the Sleeper Property, being bounded and described as follows. Following by parcels in land located in Hanson, Plymouth County, Massachusetts, bounded and described as parcels. Parcel 1, a certain lot with the line in Hanson, Plymouth County, Massachusetts, and being part of the Foster Field, so-called, being lots numbers 21, 22, 23, and 24 on the plan of sale, containing 3 acres and 42 and 1 quarter square rods, more or less, and bounded as follows. Beginning at a stake in the line between the towns of Pembroke and Hanson, in the southwest corner of land formerly of David S. Poole, thence north, 33 and 1/2 degrees west, 44 rods, and 6 lengths to the stake by land formerly of Isaac Foster, thence by said land of Foster, south, 63 and 1 quarter degrees west, 12 rods to the stake, thence south, 33 and 1/2 east, 42 rods and 20 lengths by land now or formerly of John Foster, and land formerly of I. Crasher, to take to a stake in the town line, thence easterly, 69 and 3 quarters degrees by said town line, 12 rods to be bound first mentioned, subject to the original right-of-way across said lands of the highway, as the extent said right-of-way still exists. Meaning and intended to describe the same land conveyed as Solon F. Simpson by deed from Bernard C. Beal, dated April 4th, 1907, and recorded with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds Book 1169, page 41. See also estate of Solon F. Simpson, Plymouth County Pro Bay Court, docket PL 68924. Estate of Noel F. Simpson, Plymouth County Pro Bay Docket, PL 72160. Estate of May A. Simpson, Plymouth County Pro Bay Docket, PL 9809. Desert certificate of George Fillmore Simpson, recorded with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds in Book 3324, page 137. Estate of Medella S. Sleeper, Plymouth County Pro Bay Docket, PL 120833. Estate of Ellen Simpson Sherman, AKA Ellen J. Simpson, Plymouth County Pro Bay Court Docket, 01, P0492-EP1. Estate of Myron S. Sleeper, Plymouth County Pro Bay Docket, PL 21, P1048EA. See also deed from Myron S. Sleeper to Joanna Beckford, trustee of the Sleeper Family Trust, dated April 12, 2014, and recorded with Plymouth County Registry of Deeds Act, Book 44412, page 223. See also Myron S. Sleeper et al., the heirs of Edward L. Leary, Massachusetts Land Court miscellaneous case docket, 2008 miscellaneous, 37, 8280 HPS. And see also deed from John S. White, partition commissioner, pursuant to the warrant dated May 8, 2017, issued by the Massachusetts Land Court miscellaneous docket, number 8 miscellaneous, 37, 8280 HPS. To Joanna Beckford, trustee of the Sleeper Family Trust, dated November 21, 2018, and recorded with Plymouth County Registry of Deeds, Act Book 5754, page 292. I'm almost done.
Oh, I'm bored.
A certain lot of land applied in Hanson, Plymouth County, Massachusetts, and lying toward the Indian Head Pond, so-called, and adjacent to the Cranberry Bog, now formerly of Patrick Kelly, more perpetually described as follows. Beginning at a root stake, beating the easterly corner of said Cranberry Bog and the southwestly corner of the front front premises, thence north, 25 degrees, 20 feet west by said Cranberry Bog and by land now formerly of Richard Everson, to land now formerly of Hannibal Foster, thence in a general northeast direction by land of said Hannibal Foster to a stone, who is standing in the line of land now formerly of Solon Simpson, thence in a general southeast direction by land said Solon Simpson to Harpat. Thence in a general southwestly direction alongside Harpat to a point of beginning, containing over 2 acres more or less, meaning intended to describe the same land conveyed as Solon F. Simpson by deed from Ann Taff and Ann C. Kelly, dated February 26, 1922, 1916, recorded with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds in Book 1244, page 589. See also estate of Solon F. Simpson, Plymouth County Pro Bay Court Docket, PL 68924. Estate of Noel F. Simpson, Plymouth County Pro Bay Docket, docket PL 72160. Estate of May A. Simpson, Plymouth County Pro Bay Docket, PL 9809. Desert certificate of George Fillmore Simpson, recorded with Plymouth County Registry of Deeds in Book 3324, page 237. Estate of Medella S. Sleeper, Plymouth County Pro Bay Docket, PL 120833. Estate of Ellen Simpson Sherman, AKA Ellen J. Sherman, Plymouth County Pro Bay Docket, 01, P0492-EP1. And the state of Myron S. Sleeper, Plymouth County Docket, PL 21, P1048EA. Parcel 3, a certain lot of land situated in Hanson, Hanson, Plymouth County, Massachusetts, near the border of the lake and Indian Head Pond, so-called, which is bounded and described as parrot pond as follows. Beginning at a stone monument and a stone wall marking the line between the Town of Hanson and the Town of Pembroke, thence south, 72 degrees, 30 feet east by said town line, 716 feet to a stake, thence north, 20 degrees, 30 feet west, 333 feet to a stake, thence north, 10 degrees, east, 88 feet to a stone. The last two courses leading by land from now formerly of Richard A. Everson, thence north, 48 degrees, 30 feet east by land now formerly of Richard A. Everson, 119 feet to a stake, thence north of the lake and eastern by a cartway and to land now formerly the heirs of Patrick Kelly, 453, 6 tenths feet, thence southernly by land now formerly of Solon F. Simpson, who might be getting, containing 6.88 more or less, meaning intended to describe the same land conveyed as Solon F. Simpson by deed from Richard A. Evans, dated April 1916, recorded with Plymouth County Registry of Deeds in Book 1484, page 4 of the sub-aid grade. See also estate of Solon F. Simpson, Plymouth County Pro Bay Court Docket, PL 68924. Estate of Noel F. Simpson, Plymouth County Pro Bay Court Docket, PL 72160. Estate of May A. Simpson, Plymouth County Pro Bay Court Docket, PL 98809. Desert certificate of George Fillmore Simpson, recorded with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds in Book 3324, page 137. Estate of Medella S. Sleeper, Plymouth County Pro Bay Docket, PL 120833. Estate of Ellen Simpson Sherman, AKA Ellen J. Sherman, Plymouth County Pro Bay Docket, 01, P0492-EP1. Myron S. Sleeper et al., the heirs of Edward L. Leary, Massachusetts Land Court miscellaneous case docket, number 08 miscellaneous, 37, 8280 HPS. And the state of Myron S. Sleeper, Plymouth County Pro Bay Docket, PL 21, P1048EA. Parcel 4, okay. A certain lot of land situated in Hanson, Plymouth County, Massachusetts, being shown as Lot 4B on a plan inside a subdivision of land in Hanson, that prepared for Rockland Trust Company scale, 20 inches 40 feet, dated March 27, 1991, prepared by CW Harvey Co., Inc., and recorded with Plymouth County Registry of Deeds in Plan Book 34B, Plan 185, containing 5,000 square feet more or less, meaning intended to describe the same land conveyed as Mark Myron S. Simpson by deed from Brian M. Stone and their M. Downey, dated April 16, 1987, and recorded with Plymouth County Registry of Deeds in Book 7631, P22. See also estate of Myron S. Sleeper, Plymouth County Pro Bay Docket, PL 21, P1048EA. Parcel 5, containing a land of, situated in Hanson, Plymouth County, Massachusetts, being shown as Parcel B on a plan inside a plan of land in Hanson, Mass., surveyed by Myron S. Sleeper, scale 1 inches 40 feet, dated April 21, 1980, prepared by James F. Mullin, surveyor, and recorded with Plymouth County Registry of Deeds in Plan 21, oh, excuse me, Oh 21, Plan 671, containing .74 acres more or less, meaning and intended to describe the portion of the same land conveyed to Noel F. Simpson and May A. Simpson by deed from Edible M. Dewell, dated February 18, 1954, and recorded with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds in Book 2333, page 459. See also estate of Noel F. Simpson, Plymouth County Pro Bay Court Docket, number PL 72160. Estate of May A. Simpson, Plymouth County Pro Bay Court Docket, PL 9809. Estate of Medella S. Sleeper, Plymouth County Pro Bay Court Docket, PL 120833. And estate of Myron S. Sleeper, Plymouth County Pro Bay Court Docket, PL 21, P1048EA. Parcsals 1 through 4 comprise the same tract or parcel of land shown as the Town of Hanson Assessor Mount 60 as parcel 2. I'm good, okay. So, we've got some more. Parcel 1 is owned, is supposed to be owned and formerly owned by Joanna Beckford, trustee of the Sleeper Family Trust, by virtue of deed from Myron S. Sleeper, dated April 12, 2014, and recorded with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds in Book 44412, page 222, 223. See also Myron S. Sleeper et al., and the heirs of Edward L. Leary, Massachusetts Land Court miscellaneous case docket, 08 miscellaneous, 37, 8280 HPS. And see also deed from John S. White, partition commissioner, pursuant to the warrant dated May 8, 2017, issued by the Massachusetts Land Court miscellaneous case docket, number 08 miscellaneous, 37, 8280 HPS. To Joanna Beckford, trustee of the Sleeper Family Trust, dated November 21, 2018, and recorded with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds, Act Book 5754, page 292. Title is derived by virtue of deed from Bernard C. Beal to Solon F. Simpson, dated April 4, 1907, recorded with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds in Book 1169, page 41. Title and passes to the recorded owners as follows. Solon F. Simpson, Noel F. Simpson, May A. Simpson, Medella S. Sleeper, Ellen J. Sherman, Myron S. Sleeper, Myron M.. J. Sherman, Myron S. Sleeper, Myron Myron S. Sleeper, George Fillmore Simpson. In 2008, Myron S. Sleeper, Solon F. Sleeper, Roscoe M. Shea, Madella Shea Kingen, initiated partition action in Land Court to obtain portion of George F. Simpson's interest. Parcel two is owned, or supposed to be owned and formerly owned as follows: Twenty-five percent by the heirs of George Fillmore Simpson and seventy-five percent by Myron S. Sleeper and Joanna Bickford, tendents in common, as deed by deed of the estate of Myron S. Sleeper, by virtue of deed from Ann Taff and Ann C. Kelly to Solon F. Simpson, dated February 2nd, 1916, and recorded with Plymouth County Registry of Deeds in Book 1244, at page 589. Title then passes to reported owners as follows: Solon F. Simpson, Noel F. Simpson, May A. Simpson, Madella S. Sleeper, Ellen J. Sherman, Myron S. Sleeper, George Fillmore Simpson. And parcel three, owned or supposed to be owned and formerly owned as follows: Twenty-five percent by the heirs of George Fillmore Simpson and seventy-five percent by Myron S. Sleeper and Joanna Bickford, as tendents in common, as deed by deeds of the estate of Myron S. Sleeper, by virtue of deed from Richard A. Everson to Solon F. Simpson, dated April 1916, and recorded with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds in Book 1484, page 473. Title then passes to the reported owners as follows: Solon F. Simpson, Noel F. Simpson, May A. Simpson, Madella S. Sleeper, Ellen J. Sherman, Myron S. Sleeper, George Fill- Fillmore Simpson. Parcel four is owned, or supposed to be owned and formerly owned by Myron S. Sleeper and Joanna Bickford, as tendents in common, as deed by deeds of the estate of Myron S. Simpson, by virtue of a deed from Ryan M. Stone and Claire M. Downey, to Myron S. Simpson, dated April 16th, 1987, and recorded with Plymouth County Registry of Deeds in Book 7631, page 182. See also estate of Myron S. Sleeper, Plymouth County Prove Docket, PL 21P 1048EA. Parcel five is owned, or supposed to be owned or formerly owned by Joanna Bickford, trustee of the Sleeper Family Trust, by virtue of deed from Myron S. Sleeper, dated April 12th, 2014, and recorded with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds at Book 44412, page 223. See also Myron S. Simpson et al., persons heirs of Edward L. Leary, Massachusetts Land Court Miscellaneous Case Docket, 08 Miss- Miscellaneous 378280HPS. And see also deed from John S. White, partition commissioner pursuant to the warrant, dated May 8th, 2017, issued by Massachusetts Land Court Miscellaneous Case Docket, 08 Miscellaneous 378280HPS. To Joanna Bickford, trustee of the Sleeper Family Trust, dated November 21st, 2018, and recorded with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds at Book 50754, page 292. Title is derived by virtue of deed from Ethel M. Duell to Noel F. Simpson and May A. Simpson, dated February 18th, 1954, recorded with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds in Book 2333, page 459. Title then passes to reported owners as follows: Noel F. Simpson, May A. Simpson, Madella S. Sleeper, Ellen J. Sherman, Myron S. Sleeper. We're almost getting there. Hold on. We're on the last page. Myron S. Sleeper is reportedly a natural person with mailing address of 129 Monroe Road, Marshall, Mass. Joanna Bickford is purportedly a natural person with a mailing address of 65 Glensell Street, Kingwood, Mass. Joanna Bickford's trustee of the Sleeper Family Trust is purportedly a Massachusetts non testamentary trust with a mailing address of 65 Glensell Street, Kingwood, Mass. Solon F. Simpson, the son of George Fillmore Simpson, is purportedly a natural person with last known mailing address of 155 South Pacific Drive, London, Virginia. For Donald Kingen, daughter of Personal Shea, is purportedly a natural person with last known mailing address of 9208 Beverly Overland Drive at Overland Park, Shawnee, Michigan, Kansas. Roscoe M. Shea, the son of Personal Shea, is purportedly a natural person with last known, with the last known mailing address of 4408 West 91st Street, Prairie Village, Kansas. Last known mailing address for the estate of Edward Leary, AKA Edward L. Leary, Docket number 99707, is Sheriff, Plymouth County, Prove, Village, Court 52, Overeast Street, Plymouth, Mass. This land board has voted to award three hundred thousand of this taking. Any out-of-trades or structures will be upon the easement taken or included in these takings. Except for the rights here undertaken by the town, all easements of record for wires, pipes, conduits, poles, and other apartments is for the conveyance of water, sewage, gas, oil, electricity, cable, television transmission, and telephone communications is lawfully entered upon said land, except as noted here in the statement includes any and all interested lands described above as may currently be held by the owners of the abiding lots.
Well, thank you very much. I will entertain a motion.
So, okay, well, can I read it back before?
I assure you, we never read that before. We all would have remembered that. That has never been read.
I feel a lot more comfortable if I read it back. Is there a bridge or something we can name after whoever wrote that? There's gonna be a bridge or something, or a road that we can just memorialize?
We're looking for a second here.
Second.
Okay. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Our clothes are going out of fashion now. That was, that literally takes the record for the longest motions.
Can I ask you a question about the sleeper property?
Yeah.
Is that gonna be transferred over to the conservation commission?
Yes.
That's, that's part of the, is that, when is that supposed to happen?
And she actually said that in her, in her motion.
Kate said that at about 6:20. That was twelve minutes ago, so.
That, that's part of the deed, so it automatically, yeah.
It is automatic?
Yeah, yeah. Yes, because that's the reason we took it, and it's under the care and custody, and, yeah. So, care and custody of conservation. Thank you very much, Ms. Virdoff. Okay. So, we, we took a motion, it was seconded, it was unanimous, and so I think we're all set, Kate, unless there was anything else you-
I can't hear what you guys are saying at this point.
She can't hear us.
Are we being mute?
Sorry, you don't mute.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, right now, one more one. Kate, okay, Kate, I think we're all set. We took, you know, we took a vote, it was unanimous, and we really appreciate you taking one for the team tonight and reading that out. We literally had no idea, and it's hysterical that you two were trying to write it down at the beginning. They were taking notes, trying to read it. But thank you so much, Kate, we appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you, guys. I'm so happy that this is coming to fruition, and soon the property will be walkable by the residents of the town of Hanson. This is a great thing.
Some of us may have been walking it before it became the town's property, but that's a whole different situation. Okay, thanks, Kate.
Good night, Kate.
Good night.
All right, great. And, oh, Boise. All right, so we're a little bit behind. We have with us Diane Farrell, who was our 6:15 appointment, and we've blown right by that. And Ms. Will, do you mind letting our other candidate know, and I'm sorry to do this, except Lisa just had an operation, that we're running late, and we'll call her in, in a little while? All right, thanks. Okay, great. So, if you wanted to come up front, Diane, that'd be great. Everybody's got your, your resume here. As you guys will recall, we had a pool of candidates. I met with all of them, Jim helped and met with a few of them. Both of us met with Diane, as well as Lisa, and felt that she was a candidate that we wanted to bring forward for your consideration. So, we've got Ms. Farrell, and then we have Ms. McDowell, who's in the, in the hallway. So, what I'd like to do is make sure that whatever questions you're asking, Ms. Farrell, we are consistent, and you end up asking them of the, of the second candidate as well. So, I'll just open up the, if you want to tell us a little bit about yourself.
Now, you made it so easy going first.
I, well, that was casual before, now this is the real thing. So, if you want to just tell us a little bit about yourself, a little bit about your background, what made this job interesting to you, and then we'll just open it up to the floor for questions.
I've worked a few many different jobs. Customer service is definitely one of my top forte. I like people. When the job was explained to me that there was many different things going on in Lisa's office, it made me kind of happy because I like to be busy. Sorry, I-
I mean, you know, Diane, we didn't say many things. We said, "It's a barrage. It is non-stop." Like, we, we literally, like, if-
Wait, it's 97.
We really, I was like, if you're not running screaming from the room right now, and we've just told you what you have to do, great.
I originally was gonna apply for the job in October, and I was very overwhelmed, and I was scared by it, so I never applied for it. The opportunity came up again, and within that time, I had a talk with myself, and I, I said, "You can do this." And there's a few things on there that make me a little wary, but I know I'll be able to get through them after talking to Lisa, that she would be a great boss to work with. It was-
And so where are you right now? What are you doing right now?
Right now, I work for an insulation distributor. As a branch administrative assistant, I enter orders, talk on the phone with customers, do price requests with the salesman. It's, it's really not where I want to be, because it's slow, and I need to be busy, and I need, I need to be, I need, I want to keep learning new things, and I think this is a perfect place for that.
Okay. Anything else you want to tell us before we jump into folks asking you questions? Okay, great. Did anybody have any questions? Mr. Hickey, did you have any?
Well, it's gonna be hard for me to ask Diane the same question that I asked Lynn, so I'll try to do it. But Diane, when Lisa and I interviewed, and it was just three of us in the room, no one else was here, you seemed a lot more confident in yourself. You seemed to me that you're obviously nervous.
I am very nervous.
Okay, and, yeah, we're on live TV, and there's probably seven people watching at home.
No, they're actually in the audience tonight, so we don't even have seven people. Yeah.
I, I am very nervous. It, it was very, when I came in both times, it was a very comfortable situation. It wasn't about me, it was about the job, and then I got to intervene and give my opinion, so.
Yeah, and, and I could see that. So, what I would ask you, which I won't be able to ask Lynn because she wasn't able to attend, what did you think of what Kate said? That was pretty unbelievable.
Did you name all the names that were said?
I couldn't name one. But my hearing aids went out halfway through, I actually shut them off, so I wouldn't have to hear them. To me, you just seemed a lot more confident when it was just a one-on-one. In most of your situations, and I think Lisa and I explained it, it's a one-on-one, unless you're sitting over there with Lisa, and it's taking notes all night. When you do work with the public, and, you know, we went through this in the interview, it's more of a one-on-one type of thing, whether it's with the pub-
Reporting the progress.
Or with other members of Town Hall, of Town Hall. I just wanted to let the other members know that, you know, the person that I interviewed-
Yeah, I am very nervous.
And, and, you know, I could, I could see that, and you were very confident that day, and it, and it just seems like-
I'm sure it didn't help that she's sitting there waiting, 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 you know, like, then the anxiety kind of builds up, like, you know, instead of just getting-
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's helpful.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I agree, because when I met you, you know, your, your affluence is still coming through, your chairfulness is still coming through. But, yeah, and, and, you know, and I know it can seem like an intimidating, but really, everybody's pretty friendly on the board. It's, this isn't an inquisition by any stretch. It's just to see if your personality is gonna be compatible to work with us and with Lisa. That's really what it comes down to, because the skills probably between you and the other candidate are fairly, you know, fairly consistent. So, Ms. Rain, did you have anything? Mrs. Rain, did you have anything?
No, I, I don't.
Okay. Mr. Weeks.
Hello, first of all. Nice to meet you. So, couple questions. So, can't emphasize enough, whenever I do job interviews, it's always more like, I gotta scare the person, because if you still want to be here, then that's fantastic. And so we can't emphasize enough, it's not, it's a busy job. It's a really busy job, right? So, you're not just dealing with one aspect of municipal government. You're really kind of, you're at the meetings, you're in the office all the time, you're constantly getting, you know, phone calls, and people walking in that aren't expected. Do you have any experience with that level of busy, where you're juggling many, many, many hats?
Absolutely.
And, okay, so how do you, how do you cope with that? How do you deal with that? What's your time management organizational structure? Because just like with you, when you have, when you're working in your previous jobs, you have obviously company standards, but in municipal government, you have state, and sometimes federal, standards that we have to meet those deadlines, otherwise it has drastic impacts on, not just boards and committees, but just being able to meet the deadlines. How do you make sense of all that, and what strategies do you employ?
I'm just thinking notes.
Yeah.
I, I have very good time management organizational skills. I need to be organized. I, everything needs a place. When it comes to, if the phones are ringing and somebody comes in, I'm able to ask one person nicely to hold on one sec, finish up what I need to do, move on to the next one. I know, I've heard, like, this office is very busy, and, you know, that you just, I know I need to prioritize what's most important and work my way down.
With all that, this job can get really overwhelming. In fact, I can guarantee you it's gonna get really overwhelming, which is one of the reasons why the position's vacant, is because it's very overwhelming.
Right.
I'm looking at your resume, and it's great, and you have great, great background, great experience. But I always look at the dates, you know, March 22 to present, 2020 to 2022, 2016. And the reason why I'm asking this question is because I happen to notice the same pattern on the other one, so it can be consistent. We're looking for longevity. We're looking for people that are gonna be here, that are gonna be integrated into the town, people that are gonna have a friendly face for years. They want to be able to recognize that, because we have, like with any sector, a revolving door. It's just a constant revolving door. We want stability, because the town deserves it. Can you speak to the job movement a little bit?
So, it started, I was a stay-at-home mom. I watched other people's kids. I went and worked in the school system so I could be, be home with my kids. And at the time when I left, I was, I wanted to get into, like, the school office so I could get more hours, and I didn't have enough experience, so I needed to go out and get, like, a full-time job, because at the time, my husband wasn't working, I needed to carry, you know, insurance. So, I went into, like, I did three years for the HVAC distributor, and I moved up pretty quick. As I moved up, there was really no place for me to go, so I went and I tried the executive assistant for low voltage. But that was an uncomfortable situation, working with the wife. So, then I worked, what, two years for the glass company, and that's when I realized that construction wasn't for me. I went in with no experience, and I came home with a lot of knowledge, and they were very upset to lose me. So, now, like, I went into the distribution, because I knew I could jump back into it, learn something new. And all along, I've been looking for a job, I've been looking for an ending. I'm getting older, I know I need a place, and I need, and I, you know, people find the phrase, it's a cute joke, a good job, cute job. So, I'm hoping that this is a place that I can stay and learn and be a part of something wonderful.
So, great. And that, that leaves me my last question. I apologize for monopolizing a little bit, but what, when I see patterns like this, my next question is always, so what do you, what do you feel like you need in the work environment to be successful and to stay, to stay for a long term? What are you looking for?
What's the word? I, I, I need a challenge all the time.
Well, that's easy. You'll get that.
I like to be challenged. I like to learn, especially working with free people, and obviously, that's gonna get a lot of news, and a lot of personalities.
Great. That's all.
Okay. Mr. Hill.
I have nothing extra.
Laura, before-
Did you have something?
Yeah, before we're finished, I'm glad Joe asked that question, and Diane answered it the exact same way she answered it with Lisa and I. But what impressed me about the answer was that- But what impressed me about the answer was that her husband lost his job. And even though Diane was a stay-at-home mom, she went out to find a job, to get a job, to support the family with health insurance being the most important thing because you, you said it both times Diane, that, and I forget, and to me now, the job doesn't matter, whatever the job was, it was that you were looking for the best health insurance you could get for your family when her husband lost her job. So that tells me there, she's a team player. Um, and because Joe asked that, that you jumped around, but Diane answered that question the exact same way she answered it with Lisa and I.
Yep, and same with Lisa and, 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 and me.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause, 'cause that's something, you know, um, when I'm hiring people, I do, we call it Swiss cheese. If it looks like Swiss cheese, there's a lot of holes.
Yeah.
You, and you get concerned and you say, is there a problem? You know, some, some consistent problem with performance or interpersonal skills or whatever, fill in the blank. Um, and I'm certainly not suggesting, um, that that's the case here, but it is one, it's just one of the things that you do. If you deal with HR and you interview people, it's, it's like stuck. Um, you know, so I, I think what you've said to us is you're trying to find yourself. You stayed at home as a stay-at-home mom. You don't, you didn't know what you wanted to be when you grew up.
I was trying to find a little more.
Yeah, and, and so, and you know, that's under, that's a tough, that's a tough place to be, to be trying to launch yourself after raising kids and go out there and try to figure out what you wanna do, especially if you've, you know, gotta get out there and get a job to be able to, to get the, the health insurance and what have you. Um, did you, did anybody have any final questions that they wanted to ask? Uh, Ms. Green, did you have anything you wanted to ask or comment or?
No, I, I just wanna say that, um, I, I'm very impressed with Diane and, and her skills and her personality. Um, you know, we have a lot of different personalities here in Town Hall and it's really important to try and match personalities who are going to continue to grow and not mesh, but, um, fit in with the other personalities. Um, I think Diane, um, has that, the personality. Um, and she's also recommended by a member of the community who's been on a few other boards. So she comes to high recommendations by that person's process.
Well, and I think when I interviewed, um, Diane, I know Jim and, and Lisa has said, you know, we recommend that she might be one of the finalists. Um, you know, I, I was very honest and I said, how are you at managing your manager? 'Cause you're gonna need to go in and say to Lisa, you can't do all those things you're gonna be trying to do today. Here's what you've got booked. And I also said, you're going to have to work on, on politely saying to people, we can't just be popping in all day long, twenty-four hours a day. That just is not a sustainable model. So, uh, you know, how are you at saying, do you have an appointment? Can I make an appointment for you? Um, you know, and of course, there's gonna be emergencies of people coming in that need to be addressed. But, um, you know, Lisa really needs somebody who's, um, assertively helpful. Um, and, and I, I have no doubt that Diane, um, can do that because she's, um, she seems extremely assertive. Um, did you have any, uh, final words that you wanted to leave us with? Um, we will let you know one way or the other. We're not gonna be those people, um, who leave people hanging. It drives me crazy, I think it's rude. Um, and I also think it's not very respectful of somebody putting in the time to apply for a job. So we will let you know one way or the other.
I appreciate you taking the time to meet me. I do apologize, I'm really nervous.
You don't need to apologize.
No, I know, it's.
No, not, not at all, honestly, I think that.
You're a fishbowl.
Yeah, yeah, no.
You're a fishbowl right now.
I, I think back, I'm sure you guys can remember times when you were before the board for something and it seems so much more intimidating until you're here and then you realize, you know, just, just people that put their pants on one leg at a time, just like everybody else.
I did watch one of the, um, one of the board, the, um, meetings and you, you actually were cracking your heel.
Oh, boy.
Like, it, it was nice to know that there's humor in, you know, that you're regular people, I guess.
It's gallows humor, is really what it is. Uh, if we didn't do that, we'd be weeping into our beer. Um, so, um, all right, well, we really appreciate you taking the time and, um, and thank you so much, um, for coming and we will call you.
Thank you.
Okay?
Have a great weekend.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
You know, Joe, when you asked that question.
You too.
You know, and being all scattered around, I really just wanted to go drink with, you know, would have been my answer, um, on out of the handle. Is the other lady coming in?
Yes. Yep, thank you, Patricia. Sorry to make you chief cook and bottle wash tonight.
I, you know, and our time is getting smaller and smaller and smaller.
I'm sorry, you guys.
Well, yeah, Laura said at the beginning of the meeting, Jim, it's up to you and your committee on how this meeting's gonna go.
Yes.
That was before Kate came in.
Whoops.
Stuck right.
Please join us in the front seat. Um, so this is Lynn McDowell and Lynn, we just had our other finalist in, uh, for, um, the position of administrative assistant. And, uh, this is the board's luckman. And, um, if you don't mind starting off by telling us whatever you want us to know about you, a bit about your experience and what interested you in this job, and then we'll open it up for questions.
Okay. Hello, my name's Lynn, I live here on the South Shore. I've been an administrative assistant, executive assistant for close to thirty years now. Um, it's something I really enjoy doing. I've had most of my experience in financial services. Currently, I'm working on the healthcare industry on the Cape. And I'm just looking for a change, something I'm supposed to go home, not getting stuck in deep traffic every night, especially in the summer. So, this position seemed very appealing to me. It's also reminiscent of when I first switched over. I used to teach preschool when I first graduated and I switched over to being support. Um, it was a very small company as well. I was the third person hired, so I'm used to working in a small environment and knowing many hats could be on my head.
All right, thank you so much for that intro. Um, Mr. Hickey, did you have any questions?
Well, to be fair, do you wanna start at that end?
Well, no, I thought it would be consistent, so everybody's asking the same questions.
Um, Lynn, this is very difficult for me, uh, because, um, the other candidate I had a chance to interview, um, when it was just Lisa, myself and, and the candidate. Um, so, being, uh, or I should say, doing what you've been doing for so long, why do you want to make the change now? Um, why are you, I mean, and especially where, um, it looks like all the work that you have done recently has been on the Cape. And now you're looking to, to come up this way. Why the change now?
Well, it's a couple of things. I've done a lot there, I've been there, um, six, over six years. And I've done a lot in ready for a change, um, something more of a challenge, more of best direct support. And I'm also looking for something a little bit closer to home.
Okay, any other questions? Okay. Mrs. Rain.
The only thing I notice here is that HR analytics has seems to be something that we're looking for.
Yes, and, and I did notice that when we interviewed, that's an excellent point, Mrs. Rain, um, uh, that as we know is, um, something that we need help with in our office. Um, and, um, and certainly Lynn has had a lot of, um, experience. And I believe you even, what, wasn't one of your, I believe you either, you also had a degree in, um.
A degree.
Yeah, Master of Science in, in Human Resources.
Yes.
Um, so, um, any, any other questions? Okay. Um, and, um, and if you don't mind, Lynn, I know we went through this when I, um, spoke to you, but can you address, um, the, uh, the change? You started out in, um, you started out in financial services and then you switched to healthcare. And can you just kinda talk about what that journey was like, what that path was like?
Um, so I did do it primarily in financial services for a very long time. And my change was twofold. I wanted a different industry for myself. Um, I know that they, every industry has its own quirks, it has its own specialities, but I feel my sort of, my talents will go across those industries and I can provide a service because I come from a slightly different perspective. And I also, when I did switch, I started working at Jordan Hospital, which is now that there's a deconist limit. Um, I wanted to be closer to home. Again, that was on the South Shore. Um, things changed there and I ended up back in Boston for a short time. And the Cape brought me back onto this side of the, the area that I'd rather be on.
Okay, and, um, when we spoke, um, I tried to scare you about the job. I was just being honest and I told you about the multiple priorities, um, the volume of work, um, and the changing priorities. Because you might come in at the beginning of the day and the priorities look like this and then by lunchtime, it's completely upended and something else has become a priority. So, being able to be agile and react to that, um, in real time and, um, working with Lisa on managing the priorities is important. And, and I think you let me know, and if you don't mind sharing with the rest of the board, that you, the experiences that you've had handling that, that type of environment.
Oh, I've done that a lot. Uh, when I, when I worked at Berkeley, so I was the third person there. So it was just me and sometimes just me all day. They would be out doing what they needed to do. So I had all the calls, I had to redirect things. And even though it was via cell phones, it was the early time with cell phones, so we didn't always have the, the communication capabilities we have now. So it was being able to find out what the clients were looking for, get the information. If I could help them, just direct it back out or let them know when they would expect a callback. I had another manager at New England Life. Um, he was somebody who had a very, I always tell the story, but he had a very specific time that he took lunch every single day. And he would go down to Oban Pan, get his sandwich and it was always ham and cheese, mustard and macsides, mayonnaise on the other. And he would come up and from twelve to one, that was his lunchtime. And he would use that to review messages that I was taking from him, review his email, read the newspaper or any articles. And that was his time. So I blocked that off, so people could not schedule that time for him. And if they did, say it was a high priority, they had to beat him, it was the only time, they're required to bring him a sandwich. And people thought I was kidding, but it, they got in if they bought that sandwich. So it's learning how to be a gatekeeper and how to manage being a gatekeeper and to know that you're always the gatekeeper. There's always somebody who wants to come in, there's always someone that is very important. And it's just, it's partly the relationship you build with the person you're supporting and it's also learning all the players and how each person interacts because everything's important to that person and just how you make it balance for what we need to get done.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Weeks.
Well, hello, nice to meet you. Um, so I'm just gonna ask you the same questions I essentially asked the, the previous candidate. Um, so, again, it can't be emphasized enough how busy and so, and definitely gonna be overwhelming this job is. I mean, it's, it's, I wanna put that out there because to simply say it's busy is really under, it's not selling it. And I like to, to try to tell people the worst-case scenario. It's kinda like heart surgeons, you don't know if you wanna be a heart surgeon until you actually do heart surgery and then you gotta figure out if you really wanna do this for a living. So, it's, it's gonna be an overwhelming job. It's, it, it's a lot more hours are required to do the job and we're trying to work that out than we, than are actually allocated with the position. So, the reason why I'm emphasizing that is A, so you really know what you're kind of in for, but also B, um, I, I'm really curious about your organization skills. You've spoken to that a lot, so you've kind of semi answered little questions I would be asking you anyways, but maybe a little bit more specific. You know, when it comes to the amount of municipal stuff that you have to know, um, you know, big companies have their deadlines internally and that's fine. But we also have, you know, municipal deadlines which are coinciding with grants, with state funding, with federal funding in certain instances. Um, and a lot of those deadlines are really, uh, important to committee members that are running committees and all these just different people that are, and then you can't underestimate the importance of people just coming off the street that are just opening the door, coming in to say what they need to say. It's a lot to kind of juggle and balance. What are your skills? And, and how would you handle a day-to-day like that? Where there are constantly, you're just getting pulled in a thousand different directions and that doesn't even include the stuff that you weren't anticipating just walking in the door that day? How, how do you handle yourself? How do you organize yourself?
Well, I always, I try to work out my calendar for the week and look at my manager's calendar for the week and see what's going on. So we're at least half a step ahead of the game.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but then, so then I'll go through, usually Monday mornings, go through emails and go through, um, voicemails, see what's happening. And I'm, you know, it's never the same day where I am now. It's always something changing, the priority is always changing.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it's just, what do I need to do right now to get this done? Who, it's not even who's the most important on the list, it's how we're gonna get through the most important aspects of the list and how to balance the priority of each person.
Mm-hmm.
And then just be able to communicate that, right, you have a meeting scheduled for one o'clock and now this is going on. Are you still gonna be able to get there for one? Do we need to reschedule? Do we need to push it out? Can we do it as a phone call instead? And work it that way. And just to be aware of what's coming up. So, I do, for my manager, I do, um, her corporate compliance report, which is due quarterly. And I also do her UM management minutes, um, and PowerPoint presentation, which is also quarterly. So I have it on her calendar, the dates, and I have it a week before when we need to do the presentation or review the documents. And it's on my calendar. Maybe three or four days ahead of that. So I know I need to have my draft ready to send to her. And so we have that week still to tweak and get things done. So that's something that's planned and I can work with. You know, if one of the, if the quality officer comes in and says, I need this document, it kind of blows everything up and you stop everything and, you know, sometimes I'm on the internet, like she wants a pivot table and I'm not quite sure if I can do that correctly and just figure out how to create the pivot table to get her the data she needs.
Mm-hmm.
Sometimes that takes twenty minutes, sometimes it takes a little longer, but it's something that needs to get done. I might push some of my daily reporting to the side and that can just either get done a little later in the day or talk to somebody and say, what do you need and how can I help you get it done?
Okay, great. Um, so we, we, some of the, some of the stuff in here is self-explaining because it looks like you've got some promotions within the companies and that's why it looks like this shorter dates. But I am gonna ask anyways. You have, um, you know, Cape Cod Healthcare, twenty sixteen, and even with the promotion, twenty seventeen to present. Uh, Loomis was two years. Um, Jordan Healthcare System, two years. Uh, State Street looked like it was longer stint, got a couple of promotions in there. But from what looks like twenty twelve to now, a couple of different jobs in a two-year movement. You know, in this position, we're looking for someone that's gonna be here for a while. I mean, it, it's, it's, we need more people, but all we're allocated right now is, is for this position. So, we're looking for people, you know, the town deserves consistency, you know, a, a, a face that they can learn to just, to know and, you know, be, be comfortable with. And with, like with anything, turnover is a huge, regardless of whatever, um, whatever sector you're in, um, whether it be municipal government, healthcare, or anything else that you're doing. Um, what do you, can you explain the, the, the job movement a little bit? And then just kinda speak to your goals and longevity with a position like this?
So, now that I've stayed straight, I have two different positions. My initial manager retired, so I was delegated to another organization. Um, but I was also, at that point, I wanted to be closer home. And that's why I ended up going to Jordan Hospital. And in the meantime, they were bought, while I, when I was hired, they were merged with Bettersville Deconist. And they took their financial team and brought it in. So, I was there for a time, but we were all eventually laid off. Um, so I worked with a recruiter and she kinda talked me into going back to Boston. That's how I ended up back at Loomis Sales. So that was always for me going to be a temporary thing. I wanted to be back on the side of the area, this side of town. So, I found out about the job at Cape Cod Hospital and I went there. So, now, I wanna stay someplace a little bit longer. I like where I am, but I really need something that's a little more challenging or something that I find stimulating. Um, and that's why I'm looking where I am for right now.
Okay, and that's a good segue into my third question, which is, when I see a little bit of movement like that, it's always common practice to ask why, but also, I'm, I'm always curious, what are you looking for in an employer that would make you wanna stay? What, what are the factors that contribute to you to longevity?
I think it's only the good team because you're with these people all day more than at home. Um, I think it's a good environment and that helps, comes with a good team because anybody can have a lovely desk and a big office or a window, but if you're in there all day by yourself and don't talk to anybody, it's really not a fun job. So it's just a good environment, good, um, back and forth, strong communication. Um, and that's really, I think that makes me the happiest.
Great. That's it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Weeks. Mr. Hill?
I don't know, anything else?
Uh, Ms. Green?
Um, no, no more questions.
Okay. Um, well, thank you so much and we will be calling you one way or the other. We're not that, gonna be that guy. Um, and we will, we will likely be making a decision tonight, so we will let you know.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you so much.
Well, thank you, it's a pleasure meeting all of you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, Lynn.
Nice to meet you.
Okay, so I will open it up, I don't know if you want to have a discussion, or if we just wanna move to the vote, it's really up to you folks.
Lisa, you are going to be working with both of them, do you have anything, any thoughts?
Both are, this is a tough decision. Both come with excellent skill sets. When you're, you know, when I'm looking at somebody, you look for the reasons why they're looking to change their job, or to move on. A couple of times, I heard Lynn say that she's looking to change to get closer home, whereas I heard Diane say that she's really looking for a challenge, she's looking to be a part of something wonderful, and looking to grow and, and challenge and be in the busy office. Again, and I, I, knowing the personalities that we hear, have here in Town Hall and the town, and trying to match up best personality, you know, I, I can teach anybody, I've been a mentor before, I can do a mentor again, and don't mind doing that at all. I think I have leaning towards Diane Farrell. And so, I think this is.
I, I will say Lynn also said she was looking for a challenge.
Yeah, she was.
She definitely said that.
Yes.
And what I liked about, what I really like about her is, one of the things that we know that is, is the pressing issue, is the human resource stuff, and this lady has lots of that stuff. However, I don't know how well she would actually do in a fast-paced ping-pong back and forth, like what I observed the day that I was observing. So, yeah, yeah.
Um, yeah, I, I, I think it's a steep learning curve, regardless of who we hire, I think, you know, because they're both coming from different backgrounds. I did, when I was interviewing them, I asked both of them, have you ever been to a town meeting? Do you know how that works? Lynn had, Diane had not. I'm not gonna fault somebody for that, but it's hard not to, if you don't really know what's involved and what the pieces, you know, and Lynn seemed to have more of an understanding of what Town Hall was all about. Diane has got a, a very bubbly personality, and definitely, I think they're both hard workers, and she's definitely a hard worker. Lynn has had more stability in terms of her continuity with employers. I, I do get worried about the two years, three years, even though it was explained, I do get nervous about that. And then I like Lynn's H R background, and, you know, she's got a master's in H R, I mean, I, I think that's kind of, kind of impressive. But, you know, I'll defer to the board and to Lisa, really, I think Lisa, you're the one who has to work with people, and, you know, if you feel that you're leaning towards Diane, and that you think that that's the fit for your office, then...
Yeah, I mean, just to throw my two cents in, that I think we should all, and I know it was, it was tough for me, meeting Lynn tonight, when I got to meet Diane, and...
You knew her better.
Yeah, and it was just three people in the room, but when Diane spoke, there wasn't, she wasn't nervous at all. It looked like she'd been through this before, where she's, she was prepared to speak, that if somebody does come in to Lisa's office, you know, there may be more of a, a calmness with Lynn than there would be with Diane. And just looking at Lynn's resume, you know, and one of the things that she, that both of them would have to do was take minutes.
Definitely.
I don't know, Laura, if you spoke to Lynn about taking minutes, Diane had never done it.
Yes, she had, she does do minutes now, in her job, she's very familiar with that.
To me, that's, she being her, Lynn?
Yes, Lynn does minutes in her current job, and she's done them in the past, in other jobs.
Diane does not.
That has been a big problem for us in the past. But again, you know, meeting two of them, you know, sitting here for maybe, what, forty minutes, and now we're gonna decide, you know, who gets the job, it's, you know, Lisa, you're gonna be working with them every day. I, I think I would have to refer to you too, but, you know, with input, you know, from Laura who got to interview six out of the eight, I mean, I think you only missed the three interviews.
Well, no, Diane, I, I did end up circling back.
So, you got to, to see both of them, and I mean, Joe asked great questions to two of them, you know, the same question to both of them, and they both were able to, to answer it. I mean, right now, honestly, I would take administrative assistant, you know, for two or three years, just to have that stability in the office for, you know, twenty-four months, because what if we got six months out of the last one, and the one before, I, I can't remember how long she was in here, but I would take that stability twenty-four to thirty-six months, you know, hands down.
Longevity is definitely redefined.
What are your thoughts, Mr. Weeks?
I think they're both good candidates. I think resume-wise and just initial reaction, I lean towards Lynn, because she has the master's degree in, in, in human resource management, she seems to be, she has the skill set, she's been an executive assistant for, for many, many years in various settings, she, and now, I was gonna ask about the minutes, but I kind of assumed that it was already asked in this, we're gonna get to it at this point, but, you know, municipal experience, it's clear that one has more experience over the other. So, I think, you know, I lean more towards Lynn, I, I, I'm, it's a shame that I didn't get to see in Diane, the personality that you were describing, because I, I just, I'm not holding against her, I just, I didn't get to see that, so I only saw like a shyness to it, which is, it's fair, and this is a very intimidating environment to be in, so I'm not, by any means holding that against her.
We can judge with that.
So, I, and I think, it goes without saying that, you know, being a San Juan is admirable, that's a great thing as well, so I, I didn't think there was any explanation on that, I just, so I think it's great that she was being open about that, for whatever it's worth. But from a resume and interview standpoint, I lean towards Lynn, but with all of that being said, it always goes back to the same thing, I work with her a couple hours every other week, you work with her all the time, so it has to be a fit. I only really care about, you know, two things at the end of the day, is, is it a good fit for the, for the team that you're trying to build, and also, can, can she do the job? So, as long as those two boxes are, are checked, you know, I think both of them kind of pass that, but...
I, I think she really want, when I look at, at them, this is a steep learning curve, regardless of who we're bringing in, because it's, it's a municipal job, so you've gotta learn the players, you've gotta learn, what does town meeting mean, what are the deadlines, Freedom of Information Act, all of that stuff, which neither of these folks have got the background on. But when I look at Lynn versus Diane, I do see that Diane has, you know, she's got an effervescence about her, she's a lovely, charming person. Lynn is a little bit more low-key, but I think that she's gonna be more turnkey in terms of that position, because she's got the history of being a, an executive assistant to somebody where she's got to manage them, and she's got to manage calendars, and she's done minutes, and, and Diane hasn't done any of those things. She's, she's taken, you know, she takes orders, and she works with vendors and that type of stuff, but she just doesn't have, like, that deep executive assistant experience. You know, and I, I'm just afraid that coming into this environment without any of that experience, it's gonna be even more overwhelming for Diane than it is for Lynn, because it is already a steep learning curve, and if you don't have those reserves to draw from in terms of the executive assistant skills, because you've been doing that for years, and you, and you know how to handle it, I, I'm, I'm really concerned that it's gonna be very overwhelming for Diane, but if, if Lisa feels strongly that she wants Diane, then I will support it.
No, actually, I mean, like I said, they're, they're both really, really good candidates, and I am listening to all the reasons, reasoning from the board, and I will support Lynn as well. I think either, they're both excellent candidates.
Could work well with Lynn.
I could work well with either one.
Mr. Hill, what are your thoughts?
I feel very similar to you with, as far as comparing the resumes, and what, you know, if I just saw the resumes and was talking to them, and this just happened to be me talking to them, I would be leaning towards Lynn based on her experience and what you mentioned about her knowing a little bit about municipal government. I think both of them could definitely do the job, I don't, but I think, looking at Lynn and seeing what she's done in the past, and, and managing other people, et cetera, it does seem like I would probably lean, lean towards Lynn, but I would also defer to Lisa as far because of, you know, like, like everybody said, you work with her a lot more than we do, and you know even the requirements of the job, and mentoring such a person, either, either one of these is gonna make you be mentored in order to do the job, and that leads a little bit to the longevity, you know, if, if the mentoring ramp-up time takes a year, you wanna get some time without having to do that again, but I agree that two or three years would be, would be good, but I'd love to see somebody have a little more longevity, we, I do see a little bit of longevity in at least her last positions, six years there, so. I, I'm leaning Lynn, but defer to Lisa.
Is there anybody who's heavily leaning towards Diane?
Without Lisa, is that what you mean? Without, without...
Lisa's, yeah, is there anybody on the board who's heavily leaning towards Diane?
I think so.
Okay, so, we want to support you, I think you're hearing that, we recognize you're the per, we're just gonna be an occasional phone call, I might be a little more often because I'm working on the agenda, but I mean, we're just gonna be the occasional phone call to get help, or, you know, whatever. You know, who, who do you, do you feel, are we saying anything that's making you rethink, you know, who you think should get that job?
Well, you're, you're, everyone's making excellent points, and we need to get someone in the office who really can hit the ground running, and Lynn holds that skill set to get the ground, hit the ground running. And I, I agree with the board, that Lynn is, is the more qualified candidate.
More qualified versus best fit, though, just, I'm just gonna put this out there for the sake of it, it's, I don't think you're gonna hurt anybody's feelings if you wanna go.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, if you, you, you have to be okay with whoever you choose, I just don't, I wanna put that out there, like, no, either, I'm fine with either one.
Are you equally comfortable with both people?
I'm equally comfortable with both. So, this, this is an extremely difficult decision, it really is.
Well, you know, I, I, I put this out there, we know you need more help beyond this one position that we're going to get, but we need this one position to be filled. And I'm wondering if there's an opportunity, if you have an anchor and somebody who's able to come in and hit the ground running, and has done minutes, and kind of gets to lay the land, and it's gonna be, I think, a quicker learn, do we have an opportunity to talk to Ms. Farrell and ask whether, if the opportunity should become available for us to add staff to that office, whether she might be able to do that?
Absolutely.
I just throw it out there, I don't...
No, absolutely, I, I highly would support that, absolutely.
That position is a full-time position, right?
Okay, so, I will, so Lisa, you need to tell us definitively, because we're trying to support you, but I feel like we're playing like this little courtship dance or something.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna ask the board to recommend Lynn for the executive assistant position.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay.
Second, third.
All in favor?
That's a really good question.
All right, all in favor? All right, any, okay, all right, nobody's abstaining or saying no. Okay, well, I'm excited that you're going to have somebody who is quite capable, and I think is gonna be able to be very professional, and...
Do you know when she can start?
I, I believe we asked both candidates, and they both said they would need to give two weeks notice, so, which honestly, I would never offer a job to somebody who said they didn't need to give two weeks notice, because if they're gonna do that to their employer now, they're gonna do it to you. So, so, okay, well, I'm excited.
Yes, me too.
So, you can let them know on your way home?
Yeah.
No time like the, the present. Okay, great. So, we're, we're doing extremely well and clipping along here, and next up is the TMS Deregionalization Feasibility Study Committee Report, which we have been waiting with bated breath to hear, and as you will recall, I think maybe was it like April-ish, maybe March, April, when we got the, we'll say, lackluster, initial report from TMS, and we went back and said, "You didn't appear to give us bottom-line numbers," which is really what we were asking for, "Could you go back and take another look at that?" And I thank you guys, and you guys for sticking it out, because we need the numbers, at the risk of being impolite, in order to make decisions, we need the numbers. And so, I'm glad to have you guys here, and thank you for sticking out what we thought was a very short, short assignment, ended up being, you know, the assignment of a lifetime, so. Jim, I'll turn it over to you, and you can cue up your game.
Well, first of all, welcome to my world, okay? When you see stuff like that and going through this, this is what we have every other Tuesday night. I really wanna, you know, thank the committee. This was not an easy thing to do, and, you know, we only had to meet a couple of times, but for me, you know, working with these people, you know, with Kim, Wendy, Kathleen, and Chris, I felt that I was working with some of the most intelligent people that we have in Hanson, because Wes Blosch, who at the time was the selectman, and Laura picked out the group, because I didn't, I didn't wanna have any input on who's gonna be in the group. And when we would have our meetings, once we would open up, I would just listen to these people for the most part, because, you know, that, there wouldn't really be anything else that I could add that they hadn't already said. So, you know, with that, we came up with a conclusion of what we thought as a group. Kim is gonna come up and, and give us the, the data, but it was, I think it was worse than we all thought.
And at some point, can you share with the rest of, of the group, the, the report that they made?
Yeah, I should have mentioned, the TMS came out with a hundred and eighty-page report.
I'm gonna read that tonight.
Excellent. Wow, and I thought that was a funny one, that was great, Kim, because it, it really wasn't easy reading for any of us to read. And, and Chris made a great point, I think, and I, I don't wanna get into it, but Chris, I think it was like on page five or something, you would said the other night, and, you know, there it was, right there, we were all able to go to page five and look at this, but it will be available online through our website, you know, now that it's, it's all out. It's not easy reading, it's a hundred and eighty pages, there's a lot of numbers, there's a lot of different components to it, and then, you know...
I assume there's an executive summary too, though, like...
Oh, yeah, yeah. And that's why I think Kim, you know, would be perfect for this.
No, and I, I thank you guys, and you're right, Jim, I remember when we decided to do this deregionalization committee, we were blown away with the quality of the people that applied, and the diverse backgrounds that people had, and so, we knew with all, all of these backgrounds, that we'd end up coming up with the right result, we'd have everybody, you know, with different disciplines looking at it, so. So, we're eagerly awaiting you, Tim, it's all on you.
Hi, my name is Kim McCoy, seventy-one Cushman Street, lifelong resident of Hanson, Massachusetts. I'm speaking on behalf of the Deregionalization Feasibility Committee, including James Hickey, Christopher Ernest, Catherine Cookley, and Wendy Lynn, and myself, Kim McCoy. We've been exploring the feasibility of deregionalization from the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District. The Select Board contracted TMS Solutions, Inc. out of Auburn to connect, to conduct a feasibility study to answer each of the following questions as it pertains to a deregionalization. So, question one was, what are the educational impacts of separating... impacts of separation, uh, that would include what are potential impacts on current and future students, what curriculum choices would be lost or added and what special education issues may arise, question two, what are the financial impacts of separation, what would be the cost of withdrawal, what would be the owned assets, what potential state and additional aid would be added or lost and what are the effects on town taxpayers would be, um, I'm actually gonna focus mostly on that financial piece, um, I will speak a little bit about the other pieces, but I think that's really what people are interested in, um, what are the legal considerations of separation, what is the statutory process that would have to be followed, uh, what town manager, uh, town meetings or other votes would be necessary and what public forums would be required and what are other considerations for separation, timeline, step-by-step roadmap, et cetera, um, so basically, uh, TMS outlined, outlined three choices, uh, first choice would have been full separation, second choice, partial separation, third choice, status quo, um, so I'll start with, uh, full separation, so that's basically a full withdrawal from the current Whitman-Hanson Regional School District, this would be a complete separation appointment from Hanson, um, and each would maintain and operate their own standalone school district with its own school committees, its own superintendent and its own staffing, um, while this model will live with the greatest degree of autonomy, in other words, Hanson would be able to make all their own choices, uh, it comes with the most financial obligation on each town, so, uh, basically each town will be responsible for funding their entire school district on their own, so TMS estimated the cost per year, um, obviously this is an estimate, uh, taking into consideration current salaries comparing to other towns, things like that, um, so, again, take these numbers with a grain of salt, uh, but they estimate that a full withdrawal would cost a, approximately twenty-four million nine hundred thirty-six thousand per year, here we take, uh, in addition to the cost of the new, in quotes, Hanson High School, uh, which they're estimating at about seventy-two million dollars, um, so, big numbers, uh, let's move on to the next scenario, um, because they're all big numbers, honestly, so the second scenario is a partial separation, involves sharing certain aspects and certain, um, staffing categories, so for instance, um, maybe the superintendent, uh, district level administration, central office staff could be shared in this scenario, uh, under the agreement, both towns would have their own school committees that would be responsible for the K to eight level, um, and then they would have a shared school committee responsible for the, uh, high school level, this would be similar to maybe how Hanson was run several years ago before we came into the full, um, K to twelve, uh, district, um, they outlined two different plans, um, basically, they're similar in their, um, the mechanism of how they work, one's more of a union between the two towns where they would share certain aspects, so maybe special ed would be shared in Whitman and maybe Hanson would have the preschool or whatever, so there's different sharing, or there would be, um, like a tuition based with Whitman and so if we needed to send Hanson students to Whitman or Whitman to Hanson or vice versa, there would be tuition, so the first one, which would be, um, a full separation of K to eight, uh, with entering into an agreement with, uh, nine through twelve, um, that would require a separate district level administration and office, uh, but a shared regional district high school level, um, so that's an estimated cost of twenty-five thousand, twenty-five million nine hundred and seventy thousand.
Twenty-five thousand?
Yeah, right, bargain, we're taking it, twenty-five million nine hundred and seventy thousand.
Can I, can I, um, so the first one with, with a full withdrawal?
Yes.
Is roughly twenty-five million?
Uh, roughly, yes.
Plus the cost of the school.
Plus the cost of the school.
Right, plus the cost of the school, so about a hundred million total, but twenty-five million on the, on the first.
On a partial, and then the other, the other level of partial, which I don't a hundred percent honestly understand the two separate versions of the partial separation, they seem to overlap a little bit to me, so, um, but they estimate that one at about twenty-three, twenty-three million, here we take.
Okay, so it would cost us twenty-five million per, if I hear this right, that's why I'm only asking this question, I apologize for interrupting so soon, twenty-five million per year, plus the cost of a school, which would be about seventy-five million spread out over however long it was, right, so, but it would be twenty-five million per year baseline.
Correct.
Partial, the way that you described it, is about twenty-three million per year.
Between twenty-three and twenty-five, twenty-three and twenty-four, depending on which one, correct.
So basically a full, a full removal, and or a partial removal, only as a couple million dollars if you take the school up.
Difference, correct.
Thank you.
Um, and if you read through the whole report, it has to do with, um, retiring staffing and having to buy out the schools and like, there's a lot of.
Yeah, I was trying to think of that.
Yeah, so, so the, the report goes into that in detail, I would be up here for hours.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's perfect, thank you.
So, um, and then their final scenario, which would be that the town of Hanson continues as a full member of the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District, um, this, uh, this option obviously provides the greatest degree of continuity, um, because we're all used to it, um, and based on an assessment for FY twenty-three, which is what they had available to them, um, the Hanson section of that is thirteen million three hundred and seventy-two thousand, so, in addition to the estimated costs that I just provided or that TMS provided, uh, there would be additional funds lost from the state, uh, which would include but would not be limited to chapter seventy-one regional transportation funds, so when you de-regionalize, you lose the chapter seventy-one funds, um, which could be, uh, depending on the, uh, the degree of loss, um, and in addition to those financial impacts, which is what I've spoke mostly about, um, a separation would also have impacts on other things such as curriculum.
Yep.
Um, obviously with a decrease in, say, half the number of students, course offerings would be decreased, um, maybe the, instead of having so many electives, it would be fewer electives because you wouldn't have the staffing to have so many students, you wouldn't be able to run a class with three students or four students instead of the twelve that you might get with the regional, um, there would be definitely an impact on special education, the cost of special education is very fluctuating and, um, Whitman-Hanson has a really great special education program between the two schools, between the two towns and so that would be a loss, um, and an expense as well for Hanson and then, um, not that it's critical, but for high school students, it is critical, um, extracurricular activities and sports obviously would be sacrificed in some way, um, I can s- say I have a high schooler, um, and I think losing an entire town would really, um, put a pinch on some of the sports and I think, um, there wouldn't be able to be a freshman JV bar student level probably in a lot of the sports unless we combined with other towns, which we do for other schools, so it could be possible, so, after reviewing the extensive hundred-and-eighty-page document prepared by TMS Solutions, the committee feels that at this time, de-regionalization, either full or partial, is not advisable, the educational and financial impacts are too great to recommend, um, de-regionalization at this time, so, the town of Hanson wanted to explore de-regionalization in response to the changes to the Whitman-Hanson regional agreement and the statutory method, uh, that's used to calculate the budgetary contributions, while the committee does feel that de-regionalization isn't advisable, uh, what, what else does Hanson have, what are our other options, um, so we outlined a couple things, um, possibly could we attempt to renegotiate the regional agreement with Whitman, try and make it more amicable?
Well, we, we actually are gonna be doing that, we voted at our last meeting to do that, yep.
Perfect, um, could we explore other options such as leaving the district and joining another district, yes, but does that maybe have the same problems that we inevitably would end up with, possibly, um, or do we want to try and start dialogue with DESI, you know, and attempt to help them understand how their calculations for budget formulas are impacting small towns like Hanson, because we are not the only one impacted by this, or do we try and address how school mem, school board members are assigned, that it's strictly based on population or number of students versus how the, the financial part is calculated through the statutory method, um, so, you know, that's obviously an o, option is to try and negotiate with DESI, I don't know if that's possible, but, so anyways, um, I just wanted to thank TMS, they did a, um, good job on the report, and it's not perfect, I will tell you, as people read it, they're gonna see things that we saw as well, um, the numbers aren't perfect, it's all speculation obviously, but they did the best they could, I think, with what they had, um, we saw areas, um, as we were reviewing, that we could see where there could have been decreases, for instance, I think they had, um, if we fully separated, they had us having an assistant superintendent, I think a town the size of Hanson, maybe wouldn't need an assistant superintendent, but when you're talking about twenty-five million, a hundred thousand here or there, really wasn't significant, um, so, and I wanted to thank, um, the board for, and the community for allowing us to have the opportunity to work on this really important issue, uh, because I think it is an important issue and I think, um, you know, I, I didn't have my mind set when I started, which is, I think, a good thing, um, but after seeing the numbers, I think it's pretty clear, um, at least to me and to the rest of the members of the board, the direction that we had to, to choose.
Thank, thank you, and just so you know, at our last meeting, we had Superintendent Simonak and, um, Chris Howard, the chair of the school committee come and we are opening up the regional school district, um, agreement and we already let them know that we are looking to have more representation, I can't guarantee because it's a negotiation, but we, we've, we've been very clear that that's what we hear consistently from everybody that we talk to, even people that aren't, you know, that are sort of resigned to the fact that the statutory, they're just like, it just doesn't seem fair that we don't have equal representation, so we will be advocating on that and, um, and, you know, I, I do think that there's something to be said for maybe having some reach out, additional reach out to DESI, because this board did reach out to DESI during all this stuff going on, we also reached out to our legislators, um, we talked about litigation, I mean, we, we, I, there was no stone left unturned, um, you know, as a team, everybody was kind of trying to figure out, well, how do we not have this happen, um, but it, it wouldn't probably hu- hurt to, um, talk to DESI again and, you know, there's always power in numbers too, right, so, yes, we're not the only town that's been impacted by this and maybe we need to get together with the other towns that had been impacted by it, so that they can hear that this really does impact, like, when you're looking at having to lay off first responders because the method has been shifted to a method that you couldn't have anticipated when, you know, you're financially stable, you're fi, you're fiscally responsible as this town has been for years, um, you know, low, low tax rate, trying to really keep things, you know, fiscal, and then you get thrown a whammy with the statutory method, it, it just upsets the whole, I, apple cart and, and I have to say, we've got an excellent financial team and they've helped us kind of, you know, be versatile and try to, you know, overcome that, but we had to do the, an override, um, you know, and that's not, that's not something we want to be doing, you know, we, obviously if we have to do it, we will do it, uh, but that's not a sustainable model, but when you're looking at a town like Hanson, where ninety-eight percent of the tax revenue is on the backs of the homeowners, something's gotta give, um, you know, and, and the whole, you know, you're the wealthiest town thing, just, I don't know, it sticks in my craw, it just sticks in my craw, I, I drive around and it's not that we don't have some lovely houses and lovely people who make, you know, a, a good living, it's not that, but when I just think of like a wealthy town and, and I know that when we've talked about, um, like the override even, you know, down at Sandy's Coffee Corner, you had folks saying, I, and they weren't exaggerating, I might have to forego filling my medication prescriptions, you know, or I might have to think about moving out of town, um, you know, you don't, that's, that isn't what you wanna hear, um, so, I, I thank you guys for persevering and, you know, and, um, slugging through, did, did you have anything you wanted to say, then I'm just gonna open it up and see if anybody's.
Sure, the only thing I wanted to add, um, is, and Kim, thank you, that was a great job with that, but we have talked as a group and, you know, some of the other options, it, it seems better to, you know, stay, um, with Whitman, but just renegotiate the contract, the fact, um, we talked as a group and the committee would be willing to stay together, um, to look more into the situation with DESI, uh, when the regional agreement was set in ninety-two, so it's thirty years old, DESI wasn't even around, um, and some of the numbers I get wrong because I thought it was a hundred and eighty, but it was only a hundred and eight pages?
Okay, yes.
Um, so, but DESI came about around two thousand and two, in two thousand and seven, there was that memo that Laura just talked about, but things have changed in the past fifteen years, um, if, uh, we as a committee, whether we rename it or whatever we do, look at some of these other towns, um, and then come together as one group, it could change DESI's thinking, um, and, you know, I mean, everybody knows I'm the liaison to the senior center, forty percent, now say they're still in blue in the face, forty percent of the town is sixty and older, and Joe, you know this with your grandparents.
Yep.
They're sixty and older, they're either retired or ready to retire and they have, um, fixed incomes, so their incomes aren't going up and when, um, the cost of living goes up seven point eight percent, which was the worst in four decades, and people's social security or, uh, you know, a, any other income than it may possibly have, only goes up five point nine percent or less, then there's a prob, and we have that problem right in town, we just signed contracts tonight for the fight about, um, we're only giving two to two and a half percent raises, you know, all across the board, the whole town, so when the cost of living goes up almost eight percent, you're not winning and when we have almost half of our population in town that do not wanna move out of town, that wanna stay here, um, it's gonna make it tough, we need to figure out a way to, to do this and, you know, there's five of us here that would be willing to take that on, um, even if we were to de-regionalize, it takes four to five years to get it done.
Yes, yes.
So if this process with DESI takes us two or three years to even get an audience with them, it, it would be worth it, just, you know, um, just to, to, you know, try to come up with an answer.
Well, one of the things, Jim, that I've noticed that, um, Whitman seems to do well, that we have not done well historically, is, uh, they are consistently attending the school budgeting meetings where a lot of decisions are being made, um, and they are right on top of it and they're able to influence some of those.
Who is?
Um, Whitman.
Select board or the, or the school board?
Fincom, when, uh, no, so it's the, it's the school committee meetings where they're talking about their budget, um, and, and they've got their Fincom members, um, you know, from Whitman are, are attending on a regular basis and members of their select board are attending on a regular basis and so they're able, um, you know, they're able to influence and have a conversation about allocation and maybe pick up on some of those things, like that's where the whole busing question came up last year, was they were listening at those meetings and said, wait a minute, what are you talking about, there's a different way to, to charge the towns for busing, the, there's these conversations that are happening and in Hanson, we're behind the eight ball because we're not having the conversation about, um, the budget until they're coming to us with the final budget, but it's an evolutionary budget, so those conversations are happening all year long, we're just not part of them, we're invited to be part of them and I, and we just haven't, we haven't done that, um, so I, I'm wondering if this is an opportunity for us to repurpose you guys and maybe not have all of you, but ha- have one or two of you work on that, have one or two of you work on DESI, in short, kind of have it as a, how do we, in the current environment, using statutory, how do we see if we can effectuate some long-term change there, but in the short term, how do we keep an eye on that school budget and advocate for what's good for Hanson, does what I just said make sense?
Sure.
Okay, I, you know, um.
But, you know, I, I have to speak too to say, I don't think the school budget's inflated either, like, I don't, I don't think.
Oh, I'm not saying that, yeah, yeah.
For teachers and staff and like, I, I think that, you know, because they too are spacing that seven percent but getting the two percent period.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not suggesting they're inflated, but what I am, what does seem to be happening is, um, it's interesting because I think because it's a regional school district, it's a different dynamic than it would be if they were another department in town and so with our fire and our police and our highway, we're having continuous conversations, you know, we know they need a dump truck or a what, you know, fill in the blank, whatever that is, those conversations are organic and they're happening all the time, with the schools, we don't have that, the, the school committee members are having those conversations, but as far as us and the folks at Town Hall, we're not really part of those conversations, um, and, and I really think that it ends up causing a lot of angst, you know, um, a, and, and I'd like to have us have more of a conversation instead of it always being like battle royale at budget time where, you know, where we get these numbers and then people quote-unquote sharpen their pencils and then the numbers come down, and, and I'd just like to have like a more open, like more insight, and it isn't that the school committee doesn't have the information out there or that they're not presenting it or that they're not talking about it, it's just that. or that they're not talking about it. It's just that we are not, we are not availing ourselves. We're not being part of it. Now, I'm not backing off of what I said to, to the superintendent and to the Chair of the School Committee in our last meeting, which is something severely jumped the track three or four years ago. It used to be that the superintendent would come pretty early in the process, before they certified the budget, and they would come and say, here's what we're looking at. It looks like a million more than last year, and we're adding this and we're adding that. And that hasn't been happening. What's been happening is we kind of get told at the meeting with the school committee, this is what our budget is, and then we're responding then. And that's too late by then. You know, we, we have, so I'm not suggesting it's overinflated or whatever. I, you know, is there room for things to always be more economical? Is there room for us to shop around for things like, you know, health insurance and, you know, those types of things? Yeah, there probably is. Or even just building insurance. And that's a perfect example. Like, and that's a question I'd love to ask. It's a small thing, but it's important. Lisa just went out for us, for the town, just because as a board, we were like, we, we thought it was a ripoff that we were getting charged by, to be insured for McQuan as though we were occupied. So we were like, can, can we look at that? Can we shop around? And none of us really knew the answer to it because we, nobody had ever really shopped around. We've been with the same insurance agency for like 25 years. That's what the owner told me. He was not pleased. And so we looked around and Lisa was able to get like $75,000, you know, which is pretty significant. We were like getting charged 275, and now it's like roughly 200. I mean, that was a significant difference. And so those are the types of things I'm talking about. Not salaries, not, that stuff's all negotiated and, you know, and, and we've got representation in those negotiations. But the little stuff, that it adds up, you know? So I don't, I don't know if you guys want to rethink about, you know, what, maybe you guys could meet and come to us.
Well, I don't want to, I don't want to speak for the committee, but what you said at the beginning about Whitman being prepared, you mentioned the Finance Committee and the Select Board.
Yes.
That's not us. If we need to have an executive session, the five of us, to decide who's going, or a combined meeting with the Finance Committee to say, I don't know how many, there's five of them?
That's a good idea.
Or six of them?
That's a good idea.
Then the eleven of us need to sit down. I don't, or, and I, I don't think.
You're not tasking them on that.
That committee, because then this committee is reporting to you when you could just go to that meeting yourself.
That, that, fair enough.
I mean, I think we would take a hiatus to see, you know, what's out there, but.
Well, maybe have meetings with Desi, talk to legislators. You could do what you kind of had said you would think.
I mean, I'm right, right? That we would look into the Desi stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, with that.
I think, I'm trying to piggyback off of you guys, just kind of bring us back to this. I don't, I don't think that the, that the committee work is done. I feel like from my perspective, it was, it was amazing what you all were able to do and to make sense of all of that stuff. For me, it, it comes back to a couple of things. The first is, I, I, I appreciate what you were saying, that the numbers don't make any sense. But I don't want to leave it there because your presentation wasn't necessarily about the numbers. You gave us good numbers. But what I actually felt when you were talking about more was the services and the ability to provide things to the town and to keep the standard of living and quality of life high and not losing that. So although I want to point out that your numbers is amazing, but what also what TMS was not giving us was that quality of life perspective that I value very, very much in addition to it. I think that if, if the quality of life didn't change, the numbers necessarily would or would not matter. It all depends on what you're actually trying to ask the people to invest in, right? But what you're saying is, it, numbers-wise, it doesn't make sense right now. And services-wise, quality of life-wise, it doesn't make sense right now. So I want to draw that. But with that, I do have grandparents in town. I have lots of people in town that I care about, very much related to by blood or not. They're elderly. We always think about the kids, but no one ever says the kids and the senior citizens of the town and everybody else in between that gamut. And we, I don't want to lose sight of that either, because I had to coincidentally have a conversation the other day with my grandparents about how every single town meeting, they have a panic attack about what, how much more taxes do I owe now? So that never leaves my thought. So when we're talking about this report, money-wise, services-wise, whatever, it feels like the committee did an amazing job, but that was, it was anticlimactic to me because I'm like, we're not done yet. The movie isn't over yet. I want to see what the next steps are. Now, the thing is, I don't know what that answer is. So what I would propose is kind of what you were saying, what you're about to say, is I'd like to see you guys propose what do you think the next steps were? Because for me, I work with Desi on a regular basis because I run, I run a couple of schools in my, my work. I'm working with Desi all the time. They're always trying to rewrite regulations and do all kinds of stuff. And they're trying to make sense of a world right now that's really hard to make sense of. So if you have a whole bunch of folks in the school system, in various school districts, that are going through the same struggles and the same problems with money and turnover and all this other stuff that everyone else is going through, I think there's still a lot of work that I can't put my finger on yet that you all might be able to figure out. And I'm willing to kind of go down that path with you all because I don't think the work is done yet. I feel like there's something else that we need to do.
So, so yeah, so that's, that was where I was going, Joe, is I was wondering if, great work, and now I think we know deregionalization is probably not in the cards. It's not fiscally responsible, right? Okay, but I mean, are we going to just roll over? No, I don't think so. I think we need to see, is there, are, are we able to effectuate some kind of positive change given where we're at now, given the facts we know? And now we've got more facts than we had before. You know, can we have conversations with legislators? Can we have conversations with Desi? Those conversations were started, but they have not been continuously had. So I think where Joe was going, where I was kind of going was, would you guys be willing to go back, talk amongst yourselves? You had a list of things that you thought needed to be, you know, perhaps you're even willing to be like kind of advisory in a very short period of time of things that you would like to see us negotiate in the regional school agreement? I don't know what those things are. I'm just throwing these things out. But, you know, these are all things that maybe you guys, you know, you've got some thoughts about. And, and, you know, you could let us know what your thoughts are.
Uh, yeah. But we want to, we want to pick our own committee name. Like, you know.
So moved.
What are you talking?
Something cool. We'll pick something cool. And not to change the subject, but Joe, if you could have listened to some of the stories that I heard and just, like Kim, and I don't, you know, I mean, we do have a lot of stuff to go through, but one of the problems would have been with deregionalization was before it was just the high school. And correct me if I'm wrong, Kim, but in Hanson, we had electives to take foreign languages that Whitman didn't have. So.
Years ago, yes.
Yeah, so kids were behind.
We were coming in at two different levels. When we had K to eight separated from the high school, we were coming in at two different levels and, you know, coming together at the high school. So I think by regionalizing K to 12, I think that was a great idea. And I think, you know, obviously, we're under financial constraint right now. But I think, you know, I graduated from Whitman Hanson. My oldest daughter graduated from Whitman Hanson. I have a daughter at Whitman Hanson right now, and Whitman Hanson has done well for all of us.
And, and I, I think another thing, how do we advocate to get more funding at the state level for our schools? How do we do that?
Well, that's what I'm wondering, if this committee can do something along those. Because I'm really, I'm trying to be mindful also that we, we did just take a vote to form another subcommittee to renegotiate, you know, and to look, explore that. So I don't want to, like, even give the impression that we're having two committees that are having a lot of overlap. So I'm, I'm more interested in what you think as a group you could contribute because I'm, I'm open to anything at this point, what I'm, yeah.
Funny you brought that up because Chris said, and Chris watches all our meetings, so.
Our condolences, Chris.
We found out one of the seven.
Our condolences.
Chris wanted to know why, and Chris, you could ask this question. You know what I'm going to ask. Why isn't there a citizen at large on this meeting? Or why couldn't it be one of the five of us, not one of the four of them, being on this, that committee for the renegotiation of the, you know, the school agreement?
I think that was an ill-fated concept the last time around. And that actually proved to be the reason why we could not make any progress. And I can't say any more than that.
Gotcha.
But it caused, it ended up being a real, a real, we, there were too many cooks in the kitchen. And I, and so.
You said there were 22 people?
Twenty-two, 24. I don't even know how many people were voting. But it was like, nobody could agree, and everybody had these different agendas. It was, it was bananas. But that doesn't mean that we don't want feedback from people on whatever the team who has to go in and do the negotiations is. So maybe that's something you, if you guys want, I guess, long story short, I'd love to have you guys go back, think amongst yourselves, talk amongst yourselves. How can we try to effectuate some positive change given where we are? And we will take it under advisement and, you know.
And come up with a cool name.
Come up with absolutely a cool name.
A cool name.
Yep. Thank you so much, you guys. Did anybody have any questions for the, the group? Okay, thanks, guys. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work.
You guys are amazing.
Awesome. It could be worse. You could have been on the final Whitman County Reuse Committee, which is.
I think that's what you should call it.
Just going on for years. So, I mean, they're getting things done, but I, but they, but it, you know.
The longest name in history.
It is.
The final Whitman Hanson Regional School District Reuse Planning Committee.
What's the acronym? What's the acronym?
Oh, it's all the letters.
Don't give up your day drop and go into advertising. It's not going to work anymore. Okay, all right, thank you, guys. All right, and Patrick, I hope you're still with us. And if you are, you get a gold star for persevering.
I didn't realize we had.
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
There he is.
So Patrick, thank you so much. Good to have you. And thank you for sticking it out through this extremely painful and protracted meeting. So you are here to talk to us, if you will recall. I think some of our members are new and may not have met you in the past. But, so if you don't mind kind of laying up what your role is and why you're speaking to us tonight, that would be amazing.
That's great. And yes, I can. All right. Well, actually, now I can see myself. But anyways, yes, I'm Patrick Brocha with Good Energy. We are the Town of Hanson's consultant for the municipal aggregation program. That's what we call Hanson Community Power. And then what I'm going to be here to do tonight is to talk about some updates to the plan for the program and recover the program. And I have a short presentation to kind of explain those changes and then essentially request to open a public review period, a 30-day public review period on those changes. So, yeah, if the door is open, I will go through that short presentation and take any questions that will be voted on.
Yep, that would be great. Patrick, what's your estimated timeframe here? Do you think 10 minutes or so or?
I can, I can, I can do this in, it's been a long night, so I can do, I can do this in about 10 minutes.
That's amazing. Thank you so much.
All right. I will get into it. Show my screen here. And see if it's good. Yeah, sure. All right. All right. So Hanson Community Power, that is the name of the town's municipal aggregation plan and program. That is, is just to be clear, it hasn't launched yet. So just to set the stage, it's been a while since we talked about this in Massachusetts. Electricity customers, they're always going to have your electricity delivered by the utilities, so that would be national grid. They're going to maintain the wires and the poles and send you your bill. And you can choose where your supply comes from, effectively what supply they send to the wires. And municipal aggregation, this program is all about the town creating new choices for where the supply comes from. So you're localizing control over where the electricity supply. So the, this has been in development for a while. In 2021, the town meeting, the town voted to authorize aggregation to move forward to develop the plan. And the town partnered with our organization to consult and help develop the plan. And we've worked with the Energy Committee and its administrator to, to develop the draft plan. That was released in December of 2021 for a month of public review. There was a public hearing in January, and following that hearing, we submitted a plan to the Department of Energy Resources. So what happens is locally, we develop the plan, and then we need to go to the Department of Energy Resources and get a consultation letter. And then the town is able to vote to approve the plan. Once you've approved it, then we can submit it to the final stage of getting the Department of Public Utilities to review and approve that. That's the final approval. So typically, or I guess I would say unfortunately, the Department of Energy Resources took about four months to provide their consultation letter. That, that letter actually commended us in town on a very thoughtful plan. They didn't recommend any changes. So we got that in June. But the, the problem was that in between, or I would say normally, we would be coming back and you say, hey, we got our letter, let's vote, use vote to approve the plan, we'll submit it to the Department of Public Utilities. But in those four-plus months, the Department of Public Utilities issued some rulings on other communities' plans. And the way their rulings work, their rulings apply to all new plans forward. So effectively, what we want to do is adjust their plan to take it to consideration that those new rulings, and then we can reset, and then we can submit it. But the best practice is, is when making changes to the plan, do, do another public review period. Basically, those have to be 30 days. So quick summary of the updates to the plan. Largely, the, the updates are to provide additional customer communication. So in some ways, it's a good thing. It's just more communication to the program participants. Part of that is around the orderly disclosure label. Every quarter, the program has to provide a label that says where the electricity came from, the fuel sources that were used. So they were distributing that in more ways, so that's higher visibility. Also, when you're, when we launch the program, we'll have an initial contract with an initial price. But then hopefully, at the end of that initial term, we'll renew the program, we'll get new price, maybe renewable energy compare. So now the plan is to talk about how we will notice everyone about these new prices. And previously, it was more diffuse, doing notices at public meetings, press releases, those sorts of things. Now there's a requirement for a direct demand of the customer. So that's in the plan, not direct demand of the price change. There's also this new form that's required. It's called the Product Summary Form. And the idea is that the state is trying to help consumers compare electricity offers. So there's all these, all these market offers in the third-party marketplace, well, it's appropriate. So this Product Summary Form is a standardized form that has the same information across all the suppliers so that someone can, can really easily compare. So we will be creating this form and making it available to appropriate, so that the consumers have access to that. And then also, there's more detail about renewable energy. So for those of you who know, the state has many different renewable energy standards, things like Class 1, Class 2, waste to energy. And sometimes what the state is trying to do is raise standardization to have a talk about percentages. So the, the plan and the mailings that allow customers now have much more detail that shows both the total amount of renewable energy, and you count all the state standards, and then you voluntary. And then breaks it out into different types so that consumers are really clear what we're talking about in renewable energies. And then finally, there's this whole point, when we, when we transition from that, we're the same you do. We have this first contract, first pricing, and we're going to transition to a new contract. Then we're going to transition to a new contract, they need to supplier, new price. Um, it will do that direct mail notice to everyone now. But then also, what we need to specify, uh, is if we change the voluntary renewable energy amount in any of our products, then we need to, um, tell the customers, you know, who might be on that product that that's changed. And, uh, effectively, that they should, um, affirmatively, you know, they should basically confirm that they want to be in that product. Otherwise, they'll go back to the default or the standard product program. So it's, uh, I think it's, yeah, more rest of the communication, more, more choice. And, and one other change is, oh my gosh, I've got Boxer up here, I'm so sorry, this should all say Hanson, I apologize. There are, um, we're, we're working with Boxer at about the same time. Um, so there's four, four program, four, four products in the program, there is standard, which is going to be a little bit greener than, than the state's, um, state requires, they're also trying to be price competitive. Um, and then we get these three optional products. And two of them have more renewables. Uh, hundred percent renewable, none of them is meant to be what was originally called Hanson Fifty. Um, it was a fifty percent renewables. But, uh, we changed that to be, so that they were called Hanson Mid, which will always be the midpoint. But enough for a real ownership, it's always the midpoint, wherever the state is and wherever hundred, one hundred percent. So, you know, as the state standards go up over time, that, that product will also go up over time. So it's sort of always a mid-tier offer for someone who wants a lot more renewables, but, um, doesn't necessarily want to pay the full price. So that's a slight change. Really, it's, it's all the same products as before. Um, but we just defined that, that middle-tier product, um, slightly differently. But so we still have two options to opt out as we follow. Uh, so basically, uh, moving forward, what we'd like to do is, is have a vote to open a thirty-day public review period. Um, and schedule a public hearing. Uh, generally, we, we do that, um, at the end of that public review period. So I'm not sure if the next, the, the, I think thirty days puts us into early September. So I'm not sure if there's a meeting September sixth, that, that would be more on the target, in the hearing. Um, and then a potential vote on, uh, on the plan. Um, what we would do is, there's a program website, it's HansonCommunityPower.com. Um, and that has the current plan and information about, about it. We would update that with the, uh, with, with the revised plan and some red lines. So we'll see what's changed, we'll have the summary. And then we'll get, um, hard copies to the library and work with staff in the committee to spread awareness, you know, through social media and flyers, cable access channel that this public review period is going on. So, um, that's really it. We, it's a good of a, one that it's a little bit of a, a prediction delay here. But, uh, you know, hopefully this, this will bring it up to the, kind of the current standards that DPU requires. And we'll make a ultimate approval.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Patrick. Um, Lisa, when is our meeting in September? Our earliest meeting in September? I thought I had the schedule, but I don't, I don't have it on me.
Yeah, it won't be the week it's.
No, no, because that would be Labor Day weekend.
So, the thirteenth?
Yeah, you're probably right. Yeah, Patrick, I, we're thinking that our next, um, meeting closest to that, um.
Would be the thirteenth.
Yep, okay. Yeah, the thirteenth would be the earliest in, in, um, September that we'd be able to meet. Um, so hopefully that, that will, um, work for you. And then you need us to take a vote tonight to open the thirty-day public review period?
Yes, uh, yep. Um, so yeah, we'll open the public review period and I think just schedule a public hearing for that, um, meeting.
For the thirteenth? Okay. Um, so I will, and did, did somebody have questions?
This is not about the program, this is just, the first part is just to open the review period, right?
Yes.
If we have questions about the program, we can ask them afterwards.
Um, well, I, I mean, I guess we can ask questions about the program. We are a bit, in a bit of a time crunch. Um, but, um, sure, why, why don't you ask the questions and then we'll move to the vote? Um, yeah.
From my understanding is, the, the bill payers of, of Hanson, if this goes through and the, and we, the town as a whole votes on it, they, they're, if they do nothing, they will become part of this plan and their rates will change without them doing a thing. And is that true?
It's a default, they, they default to this.
It defaults to this?
Yep.
And I don't know, I'm not seeing the plan here and I, my, my guess is it's going to be higher rates for many people. Is it not?
Ten percent lower usually.
No, it's just, he just showed us the thing, yeah.
Because my concern is.
Patrick, we're having a little difficulty hearing you. I don't know why his volume keeps going down.
Okay, um, is this any clearer?
Yep, a little bit.
Okay. Yeah, the goal of the default product would be a little bit greener, but, but be price competitive with the utility rate. So generally, um, we've been able to, can't guarantee this, but we've been able to make that default product, um, actually a little cheaper and a little greener.
Because my, my only concern, my only concern is that now is not the time to be just throwing more, you know, higher bills at people. For the people that don't know about this to then go, you know, and if it was to go up, I'm not sure, you know. We just don't want that to happen without people knowing it. And my other concern is that you're going to post it to the program's website and the library. I've never been to the program's website and I've never really gone to the library looking for some. So if I didn't know about those two things, how?
Well, I've worked with staff to spread via website, social, cable access, TV and flyers.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, in the, okay, that, that's, I'm, I'm just hoping it's, well, I mean, I know you're talking about all the direct mailers and all the other stuff when the program changes and if, but I, I just want to make sure we get everybody in town to know this is happening.
And where, where we are right now, Ed, because voters voted to accept this program at town meeting. Um, and now, you know, there's some changes, so we've got to go back through some of this stuff, but.
Voters voted, but how many people go to town meeting?
That's my concern.
And that's the issue, is that there's a whole town full of people out there that have no idea this is going on.
Can I add something really quick?
That's my main concern.
So Patrick, last time I had asked a question around, um, because I, I kind of anticipated that as we kind of moved towards this, that we were going to have a lot of questions around, uh, the change and how sudden that would look. I don't if you remember me talking about that. And this is an exact scenario around that. But one of the things that you would, had mentioned, I hope you can kind of recap, because this might be a good, an important time to do that. Um, when we were talking about people that don't want to make the switch, because they're not ready, they're not comfortable, and they want to stay with their current provider. You had discussed that there was a period in which people could opt, um, out of this, this default program and into their, their normal, for lack of a better term, uh, carrier. So could you just talk about that, like, quickly, please? Get muted.
Get muted. Thank you. Yes, yes, happy to talk about that. So, um, the updates we're doing are not related to the education and outreach, but that is a big part of the plan. And when we do ultimately launch the program, uh, we would, there's a, there's a minimum thirty-seven day opt-out period. Where anyone who would be subject to the automatic enrollment gets a direct mail notice that identifies the rate of the default product and the rate of the utility at the time, so they can compare. And it provides them three options that they want to opt out before the program starts. They can do it over the phone, uh, online, or there's a postage aid envelope, uh, that comes with the license. They can just sign it, put it back in the mail, and it goes back in. They've got, uh, at least thirty-seven days from that mailer. And then we will also do, like, town videos, um, during that time period, we'll do some meetings. We'll be working to get the word out through press releases and social media and local groups and, and kind of the, or some meetings. Um, so we'll be, so yeah, uh, and then of course, so basically you can opt out before the program starts. And then once the program does start, if you are enrolled, you can always leave at any time, um, it'll just take effect on this next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you. Any other question?
Not really. I just really don't like something automatically happening without me doing anything. I mean, there's so many other things. Maybe this is perfectly fine and on the up and up. I know it is, I'm not saying maybe.
Yeah.
It is perfectly fine and on the up and up, but I still don't like anything happening.
Right.
With, you know, you can opt out, but if you don't, you're in it.
Well, that's, that's not what he just said, though. What he said was, if you don't, if you don't opt out in that thirty, so you can leave. It's, you're not contractually obligated.
Right.
You do have to take an action, though. And I, I recognize that for some people, they just won't take that action and they'll end up getting, you know, they don't want to be part of it, but they won't take that action.
And they'll be shrieking on social media.
I know that. Um, so, um.
I just, I look at it from the perspective, just for whatever it's worth, the analogy I use is like, if, if, we, we, everybody uses National Grid, but if we decided to switch to whatever, I don't even know what the competitor is, but if we had one, we'd have to make the switch and everybody would have to go into it. You'd have to, because it's, it's not. Or if we went from Comcast to Verizon, that we'd have to do it and we'd have, you have to choose one provider. And this is along that line of choosing a provider, but I completely understand that's why I was asking. I was peppering Patrick and all these questions, Mr. Roche with all these questions last time, because of that.
Yeah.
It's a weird feeling to go a totally grid.
I don't like automatic enrollments for anything.
On anything.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with you, I agree. Um, unfortunately, that's the way, there is no alternative if this is rolled out. That's the way this works, is, is an automatic.
Other towns do it this way, is that how everybody does it?
All, all of the towns do the automatic enrollment. There's no ability to have people affirmatively elected. It's a, it's a, like a negative election, uh, because we did ask this before. Um, and I think it's because you've got to have a certain take-up rate, don't you, Patrick? I don't know what that was, but I.
So, yeah, you're, you're right. All, all the communities, there's over a hundred and sixty communities with group aggregation programs. That's all opt-out. Um, and the, the, yeah, the, the, really, the way, the way it was designed, the way of the statute, basically so that we can get the buying power that's needed to, uh, really command renewable rates with suppliers. So that's, um, that's the idea. Uh, what we, but to your point about, um, about participation rates, once the program launches and we have a contract, um, participation can fall as low as, you know, technically one person who left the program. Uh, they would still honor that, that price, but, um, but, but we, but that, typically we see, you know, ten, fifteen percent of the community chooses to opt out.
Alright, thank you. Um, so if there are no other questions, so for tonight, um, we're, uh, being asked to open up the public review period and then have a public hearing at our September thirteenth meeting. And have the public review period, um, opened up, um, on August tenth, which is tomorrow. Um, so I will, yes.
So, sorry, I'm Christopher from Illinois Washington Street. Should the, I'm just curious, so the, uh, since the thirty-day public review period starts tomorrow, August tenth, but the vote is going to get pushed for the public period to be pushed back to September thirteenth-ish?
Thirteenth, yeah.
Should the date start to, that way it doesn't overlap with that public review period? I don't know if that matters or not, but something I caught with, the top date's not changing so far, but the second date is in fact changing by a week.
Yeah, so the, it, the thirty, he's, does that make sense to you, Patrick? Like, are you going to start it on the thirteenth instead of the tenth, so it is a thirty-day period? Or whatever that thirty days looks like, I don't.
I think it's a minimum thirty-day.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah.
That's, that's great.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Um, alright, so I will entertain a motion to op- open the thirty-day public review period on August tenth?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and I will entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing and potential vote on September thirteenth?
I defer to this side of the table.
Oh, my word.
So moved.
Exactly.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Alright, thank you, Patrick. Alright, take care. Thanks for hanging in there. Um, and then we'll just, we'll. Yes.
So that was a four.
Four abstaining.
Four, um, one vote.
Okay. Um, and, um, I had on here, we've, we've actually done almost everything that we had, um, here. Up, we're up to discuss select in town meeting warrants. Um, and really, I just wanted to know, have you guys got anything that you want to put on there? Here's some things that I've heard from various people on. Um, so obviously that part-time admin for our office would be one, one article.
Been trying to track down language for that article.
Um, cannabis delivery was one of the things that we, um, we discussed. Library, I got contacted by Karen Stouffer and she wanted, uh, to talk about the generator and, um, security cam, additional security cameras. And she also wanted to talk about adding a full-time custodial, uh, person. And she explained to me, I, I said, gee, we can't, can't be adding staff to all kinds of departments. But what she explained to me was that it's actually already budgeted, it's already in their budget. So it's not an add to staff, if you will. Um, there would be benefits, though. So that, the, we, we would be picking up the benefits, but she's got the money for the actual hours. Um, Ms. Cifardo, did you want to briefly?
Um, just a quick, um, chair plus the public library.
Yep.
Um, on his presentation, Patrick, I would do have coffee still at the library as well. Because senior citizens will tell their senior citizens friends. And you live in the town, and this is just my personal opinion, everything is posted somewhere. They should know about the spring removal.
Yep, yep.
They should.
The other thing, we had been in talk with Lisa a while ago about a full-time custodian. Because the gentleman, I'm not sure if he's still at the senior center, he's part-time, we're our custodian, he's part-time. And he's elderly and really can't do the job.
Yeah.
I don't know if you have ever met him or not, but you and I and Karen had had this conversation. So this full-time person would probably be going across to the senior center, I'm assuming. So, um, and we have an excellent custodian for the library, he works part-time and he would really like to come on board full-time. So, um, because, you know, you can only do so much part-time.
No, no, I, I totally appreciate that, but, um, we, we absolutely have to have another person in our office. Um, and, and that's non, not negotiable, like, as far as the board. Um, so we, so my concern when I talked to Karen was, well, you know, we don't want to be perceived as adding all kinds of positions because we're, we're not in a position to do that. Uh, we really going to have to make a, a pretty strong case to even get this part-time person here. But when she told me that she had discussed it with Todd and that the budget was there and the money was there and that it was a case of benefits, I, I did say to her, you're going to need to be crystal clear about that when, when the discussion comes up at town meeting. Because, because that, that question will be asked, where is this money coming from? She's already got it in the budget. Um, and, and as we know, Gene Sullivan has, um, when she does her budgeting, she always has some factor contemplating that could, there could be an add to staff or changeover in staff where somebody might ask for healthcare that didn't before, or we might add somebody who chooses healthcare. So she's already, always got some small amount there that's budgeted for benefits. Um, so, um, so that was that. Um, and then, um, I had heard from CPC that they have a potential, um, house, uh, some money to, uh, fix up LZ Thomas, some, some maintenance things, um, that would fall under CPC. So it's not coming out of general funds, it's coming out of community preservation. They haven't voted on it officially, but, uh, it's percolating. And then are you going to be doing the Bonnie House?
Spring.
Okay, alright.
We can't, I can't get back from any contractors.
Okay.
I've said I was nine, I haven't heard back in a while.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I, I'm hearing that all over the place. Um, I mean, the, I, I can't even tell you how many people are just like, oh my God, I'm thrilled, somebody called me back. That's how low the, the, the threshold is for people.
The goal is there and everybody wants it, we're just waiting on contractor's side, so I'm anticipating, fingers crossed, without that for spring.
Okay. Um, alright, great. And did anybody have anything else that they wanted? You know, and this is, this isn't a speak now forever hold your peace, because we're meeting again on the twenty-third. Uh, we added that meeting. Um, at, at least I'm planning on meeting on the twenty-third. I haven't yet really heard from any departments, other than I know the Board of Health is going to plan on being here. And you'll all be pleased that, uh, the plan is, uh, they've met with, uh, the town accountant. They also met with Mr. Malisi, who's been very gracious about showing how he built a budget for Camp Kawani and showing them how they should do the same thing for their account. Um, and so, uh, the idea is that they're going to present the budget at the August twenty-third with the thought that we would reinstate the, the transfer, um, station budget. so that people, people's trash isn't in peril. People being able to use the transfer station isn't in peril.
I think we're also going to have, he's probably going to present capital improvement warrant articles as well.
Okay.
So we'll get to that.
All right, great, that's great. And, yeah, and so, do you guys think, do you think that you'll have a capital improvement matrix? What, when do we?
Definitely, we're going to meet the twenty-third, I think, twenty-second.
Twenty-second, selecting the meeting on the third, right?
Yes.
When we meet on the twenty-second, we'll have everything ready. We have to, the following day.
Okay.
Which is another, I was going to use that cue as a plug for, I talked to Frank yesterday. He only had like two, I think he said, responses. So if you have anybody from committees or departments that need to, and I think it was, I don't want to call anybody else, doesn't matter. Just, if you can just kind of put out a little, we have to get it done by the twenty-second.
All right. Did anybody have anything else?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Laura, did you say that the Board of Health is looking to have it reinstated?
The Board of Health is going to, if you remember, the prior board, before Ann and, and Ed came on board.
Yeah.
For the May town meeting, we had asked if we could have a budget presentation. So we could understand how they were going to decrease that budget gap, given all the different things that have happened. We never got that to the satisfaction of the board. We really never got, but we never, so. This new Board of Health is working on trying to fulfill that need that was actually a request from the prior board. But they know that without that, we're not going to be able to board, vote as a board and say, we feel comfortable reinstating that money into their budget, the one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars.
That was turned down by the people at town meeting.
Yes, yeah, no, they, no, they voted, they, they have, they voted to hold it back, too.
It was held back.
It was held back. So we need to, at the October town meeting, if operations at the transfer stations are going to continue, you know, in any shape, whether they decide they're going to change hours or whatever, I don't know what they're going to present. I haven't seen or really talked about it. We're going to need to have a warrant article that says we're going to restore some portion of that hundred and sixty-five thousand to them, so that they can actually continue to run the transfer station. So, but they're going to make a presentation and tell us what they're doing to close that gap. So I thought it was a pretty reasonable request, it's one we had made to Camp Kawani and, you know, so I'm looking forward to that. And then, other than that, I really haven't heard of anybody coming to talk to us about warrant articles. So if it does end up just being the Board of Health, I may defer, you've got a warrant article?
It may be, I was advised by the Historical Society's executive board to see if we would need an article for this. The executive board of the Hanson Historical Society would like the town to flip the bill for the Hanson Historical Society's electrical building. Building is municipally owned. It's about ten dollars a month, equals about a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty dollars a year max.
You have a lease, though, with the town, right?
I'm honestly not sure, I'm waiting on the final, on that sort of stuff.
Certain individuals did represent that there was a lease. And I think part of the lease is that, I know with the food pantry, the food pantry pays for their utilities. It's, you know, the building is owned by the town.
Right.
But whoever the entity is, is responsible for the utilities.
I hear you.
And I, and in fact, I believe that there is a prohibition under the regulations for the town to subsidize a private entity's utilities. So I don't even believe that it's legally, we're even legally able to do it.
Right.
So I, I would say that that probably would be something you wouldn't want to pursue.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, because you've added time to this meeting, we're going to ask you to leave now.
Okay, and I just had one, one thing, one last thing that I needed to, to, did you have an article or no?
No.
Okay, all right.
You don't like my article.
Okay. Well, I don't know what your article is, but ratify and sign Hanson firefighters' contract. We've discussed it before, we've talked about it before. And now I just need a vote by the board to ratify and sign the Hanson firefighters' contract.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Each other's table.
I'm embarrassed, I'm really mixing it up tonight. And I'll take a roll call vote?
Aye.
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 Okay, great. Great. And committee updates. Did anybody have anything, any burning committee?
Is the cutoff date August twenty-third?
That is the cutoff date, yep. Yep, and so if anybody has anything that they would like to throw up on that board and see if it sticks, that's the meeting to come to and talk to us about it. And we can put a placeholder in, but I did send an email to all of the department heads and committees saying, we're going to be gracious, but not as gracious as we've, we've been in the past. The twenty-third is the deadline. That means you need to talk to the town accountant about whether it's fiscally, you know, advisable. And if it's a bylaw or any kind of thing like that, we've got to have time to be able to pass it by legal counsel, because we're not going to be flying by the seat of our pants the week before town meeting, trying to get all this stuff lined up. And I'm expecting that if people are going to come to the twenty-third's meeting, that they have the basic foundation of the article and some semblance of an explanation.
Right, so, go ahead.
Okay. All right, did anybody have any burning desires to update us on committees?
I will, I do. Parks and fields, and I'll be less than a minute. Their, their summer season's wrapped up and baseball, the boys, ten-and-under, won their league. And in the girls, who, they use a red, white and blue division, first time ever. Fourteen twelves and tens all won, whether they were the red, white or blue division, they all won. I'm excited about this. They also, the girls ten-and-under won the Halifax tournament. But the twelve-year-old girls started a game on Thursday night. I was able to catch some of the games. But it had to get continued to Monday night. They played ten innings on Thursday, they had to come back and play two more, twelve innings, it was great. I just want to throw that out there because, you know.
Because it's in your blood, the softball's in your blood.
Yeah, I'm excited, so.
Okay, anybody else have any, okay. Then the last bit of business that we have is the one-day liquor licenses. And I need to tell you, I do not know who Ashley Kemet is. Somebody asked me that before.
I asked you.
I have no idea who she is, clearly related to my husband in some way, because it's an unusual name, but I don't know who she is. So I will entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
How did you straighten your report?
Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am. You know what, it wasn't on my agenda.
It was left off again, even though I put it back, so I will fix that.
Ms. Green, oh, okay, do, do you need to excuse yourself, Mr. Weeks?
Nearly five more minutes.
Okay, all right.
Oh, other question. So I, July twenty-seventh was the deadline for the town to request the second of the ARPA allocations from the Treasury. So I was successful in going on to sam.gov and getting our special number that we needed. So made that deadline request. So the town will be receiving five hundred seventy-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars, which is the second allocation for ARPA. We had received the first allocation in June of two thousand and twenty. And I just want to really recognize the amazing teamwork of our town council, conservation commission, Chair Phil Clements and the conservation department, our town accountant, who came into the office on an afternoon on almost last minute, treasurer collector, Jean Sullivan, as well as myself. We all worked really, really hard to bring the sleeper program to a close, to meet the deadline of the state for the grant. The state was ready to.
To walk away.
To walk away.
Yeah.
And we all really were, worked very, very hard to pull all of that together and get the state everything they needed, literally within hours. So I just really want to give a big shout out to all of that teamwork. Because without all those folks, we would not have had that grant. And I just want to say, I had with our strategic planner, Ann Donner, I brought her around Hanson and showed her all the highlights of Hanson, so she could get a visual, including the barage, library, COA, lay control buildings, fire, police, a picture's worth a thousand words.
She loves barage. She already told us she's planning on bringing her dog there.
So brought her with that. And people have kind of been coming to me, I talked about the car show a few weeks back, being held on October ninth. It's going to be at the Whitman Hanson High School this year. Last year we had it with the McQuan and we had just over two hundred cars come and we ran out of room. So we moved it up to the high school this year, which we can probably fit about three hundred cars. So every year this gets bigger and we're really looking forward to a good year for the car show this year. And that will do it.
All right, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great, thank you. We have been around the world and back again tonight.